Recording in progress.
Heads up. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the April 22 meeting of the San Benito County Board of Supervisors. Call a meeting to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance by Supervisor Satello.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberating justice, law.
Can I please entertain a motion for approval of certificate of posting, please?
So moved.
Do we have a first and a second? Second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. We will move on to board announcements and committee updates. Supervisor Curro?
Um, I don't have any committee updates except for from behavioral health. Uh, we have, oh, my notes up here because I actually typed them out real quick. Um, at behavioral health, they have initiated the mobile crisis unit. Uh, they have barely been about three weeks available, and they are tracking a lot of data, which is really great. Um, the, we're trying to get the word out there about this 24/7 mobile crisis unit, and if anyone is in need or has a crisis that they need support, uh, they can call 831-902-2911. So that would be 902-2911. Um, additionally, I just want to thank everyone, especially at Integrated Waste for Earth Day celebration that was on Saturday, and today is Earth Day. So, um, I want to thank Recology for sponsoring and all the other sponsors and participants. I, it, it didn't seem like we had as many people because it was Easter Sunday, but it was still a great event and very informative, and that's all I have for today. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Velazquez.
Yeah, a quick update on the San Guso reservoir. We finally were able to make contact with someone from the Bureau of Reclamation, and he has a lot of knowledge of what happened in the past, and he's going to be coming out or sending us information in the near future to help us get updated on what, how the feds see it and how we can all still work together.
Great. Thank you very much. I'll go real quick. Um, had the opportunity to attend the Lead Me Home Summit, uh, put on by the Coalition for Homeless Services Providers. Uh, it's an annual gathering in San Benito County Monterey stakeholders. Uh, we had county staff there. It was great to have them. Office of Education, Representation locally was there, and then I had the opportunity to give opening remarks, remarks as the co-chair of the Leadership Council. And I focused those comments on encouraging the group to think differently and challenge, all of us to challenge our own deep-rooted sort of beliefs and outlook to try to find new ways to approach the homelessness crisis. Um, as far as other committees, um, I had Monterey Air Resources. There's an advisory committee vacancy for San Benito County, so anybody who would like to give input and provide recommendations to the Air Resources District, uh, please let me know or contact Embard. Uh, as far as Cog, I've been trying to get answers as to why Highway 156 has been so backed up. There, there's a number of potential reasons there. Um, just continuing to urge Caltrans to look closely at that. Uh, Earth Day as well, attended the local event. Thank you to everybody who took part, all the organizers. Um, had the pleasure to hand out certificates, joining with Supervisor Curro, um, from the county to, um, for the poster art contest winners. So that was great to have all them there. And then I hope everybody had a wonderful Easter weekend. Supervisor Zenger? Supervisor Satello? All right. Thank you very much, everyone, for that. And that would take us to public comments. So this would be the opportunity to address the board on items not appearing on the agenda.
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card. On Zoom, please press star nine or the raised hand icon. And in chambers, I have Mia Casey.
Good morning, Supervisors. At multiple meetings, Supervisor Velazquez has repeatedly mischaracterized previous Hollister City Council actions, myself included. Both he and Chair Cosmiki have thrown around accusations of fiscal mismanagement. Frankly, it's a bit ironic given your current budget situation with a $6 million deficit. Frankly, I'm just tired of the continued pushing of this false narrative. So I brought our budget from 2425, and I want to quote to you directly from it about the financial difficulties of the city. This year's budget is balanced using reserve funds and one-time revenue sources reflecting the city's ongoing financial pressures resulting from flat sales tax growth, reductions, I'm sorry, outdated user fees and enterprise rates, underfunded fire service contracts, and projected reductions in grant revenue. Over the past seven years, the city has increased the number of positions in city departments from 163 to 222 to align with increased demand for service. However, the 2425 budget includes 2.2 million in program vacancy savings resulting from not hiring unfilled positions. Additionally, reduced grants revenues due to state and federal economic challenges as well as delays in completing. The fiscal 2021, 2122, and 2223 financial audits have further constrained our revenue streams. So let's get to the real issue here. When our council took office, a serious financial mess was uncovered. For two previous years, the city finances had been left unaudited under then Mayor Velazquez in council, and serious accounting errors have been uncovered during the course of these audits. Fixing the problems is taking significant time, money, and outside auditors, and that work is still ongoing. It's affected the budget. The city's credit rating may limit the ability to get grants and secure financing. So let's just stop pretending that this problem was all created in the last two years. Look, it's time to move forward and deal with issues at hand. Stop all the politics, the personal attacks, and the attempts to create division in the community. I would thank you for your cooperation in this regard.
Thank you. Next in chambers, Diane Ortiz.
Good morning, Supervisors and community. Uh, my name is Diane Ortiz. I am a resident, a voter, and the CEO of Youth Alliance. Um, I also have, um, Youth Alliance is part of the Public Defender Oversight Committee, and that's why I'm here today. Um, at the process of which, um, the committee was reviewed, the board was reviewing the committee makeup, I was very discouraged and disappointed that the recommendations provided by the committee with numerous hours of public input and time was completely disregarded after months and numerous hours in this process. And it really made me question, um, whether or not this process, um, was going to matter, whether our voices were and opinions were going to matter. Um, not only was it disrespectful to the Supervisors, uh, Satello and Curro, who have been championing this effort, but it was really disrespectful to all of us in the community that were involved in this process. And I just want to make sure that, um, the people understand that the Public Defender's Office impacts us all, and we are highly committed to ensuring that there is improvements, um, in this office. But the time and effort that we spend on this is based upon, uh, lived experience, community input. We've engaged numerous, um, community meetings, and, um, I just want the assurance of the board that, um, they will listen and consider the recommendations and that our time and process on the committee here going forward is actually going to matter. And, um, so I just want to thank Supervisor Satello and Supervisor Curro for championing and being very thoughtful in the process of community engagement and being very reflective and working towards, uh, ensuring that we have an improved Public Defender's Office. And I'm asking this board now to please provide assurance that our time will not be in vain. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comment.
Thank you very much. Uh, we'll move on to the consent agenda. These matters will be considered as a whole without discussion unless something is removed from consent. Um, do we have any items that we would like removed from consent?
Yes, Mr.
Supervisor Curro? Oh, I'm sorry. We did have one quick.
I did have one.
Announcement from our county council.
Yeah, staff is here to discuss this, but it's, uh, we can add an item 1.16. Um, this came to the attention of the board just this morning. Um, it needs to be acted on before the next regular meeting. Um, and so if you can make those findings and add it to the agenda as 1.16. It is approved the memorandum of understanding and landowner agreement between Keep America Beautiful, the San Benito Resource Conservation District and the County of San Benito for two community action events in May at the San Benito County Historical Park, and authorize the chair to sign. This is, um, no found agreement.
You need a motion to add? I'd move to add that item.
We have a first, we have a second. First and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Approved. That item is added. Thank you for that. And we have Supervisor Curro?
Uh, yes. Um, just for some clarification, I'd like to poll item 1.10 and 1.14. Thank you.
Supervisor Velazquez, anything?
Nothing.
And Satello? Nothing. I don't either. So, um, so that would take us to, uh, public comment. We have public comment on consent.
Um, if you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card. On Zoom, please press star nine or the raised hand icon. And I have no public comment.
Great. Um, do I have a motion to approve the remainder of consent with the exception of 1.10 and 1.14?
So moved.
First, we have a second.
Second.
First and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion passes. That would take us to item 1.10. Supervisor Curro?
If you don't mind, I, the reason I polled this item, and, um, Chris, sorry to put you on the spot like this. Uh, the reason I pulled this item is because this is a first for me in this map, um, approval. And I just want to make sure that the public's fully aware of the process of these new maps, because it's not like we have a lot of say in this. And I just wanted to kind of get your take on, um, the process of these new fire maps. This is specifically talking about where these fire areas and high fire areas are. Uh, these new maps do highly impact your, um, it fire insurance and coverage. So I, I just don't feel like there's been enough conversation. And I know in South County, it's affecting a lot of us. So, Chris, would you mind speaking a little bit about the process? And what does this map mean for our residents?
Um, I will tell you what I know, and then I will introduce Chief Golding, who has a lot of the information as our fire chief. Um, these were presented to us by the state. They're the revised feasibility fires. Thank you. High fire hazard severity zones. Um, they have changed. They have grown. Um, they updated the county in both cities. It went to the City of Hollister's board last night. It will go to San Juan in May, and then ours, um, the introduction is today. It's been published on our county website and on social media. We will continue to push it through social media, and, um, it will be published in the freelance next week, and then it will come to the board for adoption. Um, but Chief can speak, um, in more detail about the zones itself.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Chris, and welcome, Chief.
Good morning. Uh, for the record, Jonathan Golding, Fire Chief. Uh, yeah, I, and I had a conversation with, uh, the Acting CIO, Henny Ring, um, this morning. Uh, I would like to, I believe, on the next meeting, I'm going to actually come and give a, a presentation similar to what I gave last night at the, uh, City of Hollister Council meeting, and then what I'll be giving in May as well at San Juan Batista. That'll outline the maps, but it, just a, a quick understanding of these maps theoretically from state California State Fire, um, Marshal's Office. These are not supposed to affect insurance rates. However, everything right now is affecting every insurance rate, um, as we know, but I'll, I'll talk about the history more in depth, um, when it's noticed so the public can see it. But essentially, um, these maps were updated. The last time they were updated were, uh, between 2008, 2011 for the local areas. What's changed now, um, is there used to only be one classification that they identified for the local response area. Now there's three classifications. Each one of those classifications have different requirements, and I'll cover that. We'll put the map up next time. The maps are available both on the county's webpage as well as the City of Hollister's webpage. City of Hollister, um, serving as the Fire Department for all three jurisdictions. All three maps are there. So you can go to either one of those if you want to review the map, um, to see where, what type of zone you fall into. But when I come back next week, I'm more than happy to get a little bit more in depth, um, and tell you exactly what the maps are and what it is that you are adopting. But the requirement is, um, that we do have to adopt these maps. Um, we cannot decrease any of these zones. We could increase the zones. Um, I'll explain why I don't think that we should increase them. Um, but I'm happy to answer any questions you have about it. Um, or you can wait till my presentation in two weeks.
I, I would be happy to wait for your presentation in two weeks. I would just like to ask, if possible, would we be able to see a before and after of the impacted areas so that residents, because it's what, the feedback I got from, um, my residents is it didn't have like the roads on the map, so you couldn't really tell exactly, uh, what, there's like a, a red area that went through like Hidden Valley and part of, of, um, um, another development. I'm sorry, I can't even remember where I live. Ashford, sorry. And it went between the two, and there was a concern of, is part of that in Hidden Valley? And they had concerns. And then what, what does the public need to know when it comes to their zone changes? So if that's something you could address at the next, uh, presentation, I would really appreciate it. I just wanted to make the public aware.
Yeah, so it's a little bit complicated. What the zones mean will absolutely be part of my presentation in two weeks. Um, the, the specifics, so unfortunately, when you go on the, the state of Califor, we get these maps from the state of California. Um, and right now, we can look at, you can go on there, there's a, a fire hazard severity zone finder, but it's going to be based upon the old mapping. Um, so the new mapping is overlay is not in there yet until the, uh, maps are adopted. And that's going to be the way to actually drill down on the parcel, um, specific parcels. Uh, I could see if maybe, um, working with the, with both Chris Mangano and Henny Ring, if maybe GIS can help us, um, fine-tune that a little bit, make it a little bit more clear. Um, but unfortunately, like the mapping that we have is, is, it doesn't show the roads in there quite the same. But we'll look at the maps that, um, were transmitted to us and see if there's something we can't do to try and help locate, uh, more specific parcels. It's more viewable from general areas.
Yeah.
Um, so we'll do, we'll, in the next two weeks, we'll do what we can before we come back.
Appreciate it. And I understand if there are limitations technology-wise, um, with the CAD drawings or, um, the maps from the state. So, but I just wanted to make everyone aware about this process because it, it's not like we have a lot of say, you know? We, we, we really don't. And I just don't want the public not to understand that this is kind of pushed down upon us. It's not something that we get to, even though we're the body that will be approving it. We're really not. We're kind of rubber stamping it. So I just wanted to make sure that that was known.
We receive PDFs, so it makes it challenging. Um, but we will see if there's something Renee can do with it.
That would be great. Thank you so much. I really appreciate you both just being here for that. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Hearing done?
I would move.
I do. You made the comment about what the state is, and we, you don't recommend increasing the areas. Um, I think I've had some concern for years about areas that I thought should have been more of a danger zone than they were. I'm glad to see the updates because it's more realistic and it's, we're not fooling ourselves. But I'm, haven't had a chance to go through it all, but I'm, I'm concerned that there's probably areas that probably should be.
So, so to your point, um, in, in the past mapping, they only did, um, the very high. Um, and so something that was just slightly below that extreme level would not have been, been identified at all. It would have been the same as, so these maps actually, um, this, at the state response area, they did three categories. Um, but for the local, they only did the very high. This will now have very high, high, and moderate. So that high is probably a lot of those areas. The, and I'll get into it more, but the reason why I don't recommend increasing it is they use a, a highly scientific method to, of modeling. And so if we're increasing, which we, we do have the ability to increase those zones, we would be increasing based upon, um, just an opinion, not necessarily the scientific data. And it does have repercussions for what you do, especially when you go above that, that moderate level, uh, because it has pl, planning and building implications, um, which this board will have the ability to increase those designators if you want to. Um, my, my statement of, I don't recommend it was only because CalFire does an extensive modeling program on how they determine it. They look at 30 years' worth of history and model it in the worst possible conditions to come to these. And so if we are increasing the designation, which again, this board has the ability to do, we'd be increasing that designation without the same backing, uh, scientific backing that they have. Uh, but, but I think when you see that map, um, when you get a chance to really look at it, you'll see some of those areas that, you know, I believe should have been a designated area. They now fall into that high level versus, um, the very high, but they weren't, in the previous maps, they just weren't designated at all. It was the same as if there was no risk in that area. So this map does take it a step further. Uh, but if you have questions or concerns about it, we can discuss that when we actually, when you get a chance to review the map. And you don't have to wait for two weeks. If you have questions, feel free to contact me. We could talk through that. Um, if there's something that you feel like we should be reanalyzing the designation.
Yeah. And my concern again is just getting prepared. Any building that's going out anywhere in some of these areas have to be prepared.
Yeah, and anything in that high or very high, there is zoning differences. So that's going to be the biggest effect you're going to see is those areas that weren't designated as high before that are designated now. Planning and building are going to, they're going to be an effect on those, on what can be built there and how it has to be built.
Thank you. Other questions and comments? Um, the only thing I noticed, it's hard to tell because there aren't like street, is, is that San Juan Canyon in there that's like in the very high? Because I know that area's been.
The canyon was in there.
Because it's kind of, yeah, okay. It looks like it.
It is challenging to see.
Okay, okay. Just want to make sure. Okay, appreciate that. Uh, do we have a motion for approval?
I would move to approve.
Do we have a first? Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Uh, I'm on to 1.14.
Okay.
Supervisor Curro?
Sorry to do this to you, Steve. Um, I really just want to understand, and I like this Excel that shows where the fundings come, coming from. My only concern is this changing any of the road priorities that were previously adopted? Because there were, it, it, it only was showing, it looked like SB1 funding, and it showed like, um, impact fee funding. And I, I, I was looking at the Siena Ga Road one, and I don't have it pulled up right now, but the one that was the funding for Siena Ga, and it also included Fairview? Is that correct?
I'm a tiny bit confused. Are we talking about 1.14?
1.14 the roads, right?
Okay.
It's the specific.
It's about Fairview Road and how we did a little extra work on Fairview Road?
Well, yes, but it had the attachment. So I'm, I'm specifically talking about the attachment. Um, I know what the item is saying, but the attachment has fundings listed, and it made me take pause because I just wanted to make sure nothing's changing with any of those future road projects.
Well, as a later item that I've been asked to present on, on, let's see, what is it? Two point three. Thank you. I will provide an update on road projects, budgets, and status in, to read, to answer your question.
Okay, so my only question then is, the attachment that says roads and bridges, cost, and funding, is that showing changes?
Is that showing changes? No, that was just to show the improved, the original improved budgets. This is saying, we did extra work after that, and so because we extended the project limits a bit, we needed the additional funding on Fairview for that specific project. So that's all.
Okay. It, it wasn't like taking from another project to fund this?
No.
Okay. That's all I wanted to clarify.
Okay.
Because, uh, when people looked at the attachment and there were zeros, they got very confused. And I just said, I will ask the question. I'm, I'm sorry, I was unable to reach out to you yesterday, and I thanked the board for me being able to uphold it.
You bet. Any other questions or comments? Hearing done. Can I entertain a motion for approval?
I'd move to approve.
We have a first, we have a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hearing none. No opposed. Motion passes. That would take us to the regular agenda. So the first item on regular agenda is 2.1, County Administrative Office Interim, uh, CIO, Henny Ring, uh, Discussion on County Fire Protection Services and Direction if desired.
All right. Good morning, Board. Um, I believe, uh, Bill Adams, our, uh, legal counsel is on Zoom as well, just for, um, your information. Um, to begin with, um, I'll just give you a little bit of background. So on March 25th, the county received a 270-day termination notice from the City of Hollister ending fire services with a date of December 20th of 2025. Um, due to the tight timeframe associated with this 270-day termination notice, um, it's necessary for county staff to begin the process of creating their own fire department, at least the discussion of that. Um, as previously approved by the board, we have a new county, um, fa, fire department ad hoc, uh, which would begin facilitating that process along with our consultants. Um, the county is actually recommending to move forward with that. Um, we do have just an update. Since this agenda was written last week, we do have an ad hoc, a county fire department ad hoc meeting scheduled for today at 3:30. Um, we've also included, um, San Juan to participate, and they agreed that they will have somebody there representing from the City of San Juan Batista. Um, in addition to this, um, agenda item, the staff is recommending that the county pause its participation in this fire feasibility study until a later, later date to be determined. This is so that the county can redirect a portion of that cost as well as, um, just to highlight that due to staffing reasons and administration right now, if we were to work with the feasibility consultants, I don't believe staff is available to do that. We're just short-staffed, um, as of now. Um, and that would be an impact. So that's what the recommendation would be, is just to put a pause on that feasibility study until later notice. Um, also, just as the board may, is aware that the City of San Juan and the county sent a letter to the City of Hollister on Friday, um, April the 17th, stimulating our previously approved terms for the amendments on the contract. Um, just as a, the update as well, last, as of last night, on April 21st, the City of Hollister had their Fire Protection Services item on, um, regarding fire services contract amendments that we presented back to them last week. Um, my understanding that the city is asking to go back to the table for further negotiations, uh, with the county and the City of San Juan. So I just wanted to give an update on that piece as well. Uh, so the question to the board. So the question to the board is whether that is an option or not for the county, so I will leave that with the board on that. But today's recommendation is, is just to continue with the new county fire department, our fire department ad hoc and meet with them today at 3:30 with the consultants. Also, the pause of the feasibility study until further notice. And then any relevant discussion or direction regarding future fire protection services that the board may have. So I'm available for any questions, anything that the board has today.
Thank you. And I know we have the fire chief and city manager here, so if either of you would like to speak to what our interim CAO mentioned, please feel free. Otherwise, if you're available for, for board questions, that would be much appreciated as well. I see city manager Marioni's coming on up.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. David Marioni, city manager, City of Hollister. Yes, so as, as Ms. Ring mentioned, our council did meet last night to discuss the matter. They did talk about the, the offers presented back. We did talk about how the, the ad hocks of the county and San Juan met on the 11th and slid their, their proposals over. Our council has received those. That was like the first step was to ask you guys to, to go work together. And the council's interested in continuing negotiations. However, the discussion was at the 3-0 staffing level and both the offers from the county and San Juan had minimum levels of 2-0 staffing. So pretty much that's my update. We look forward to, to meeting. I'll be getting back to my office. We, we had a late night last night, so I haven't sent an invite over quite yet to ask if you guys would like to, to sit down and meet, but when I get back to my desk, I'll be sending something to both Ms. Ring and Ms. Colick in San Juan Batista.
Thank you. Anything further before we go to public comment? And we'll certainly come back if you're available. Go to public comment then, please.
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card. On Zoom, please press star nine or the raised hand icon. And in chambers, we'll start with Alice.
Good morning. Feel like I'm repeating myself again. Obviously, I'm here for the firefighters. I was at the board meeting last night with city council. I agree, and two per truck is ridiculous. I mean, think about it. They can't do anything that's relevant in any situation. If somebody's trapped, they can't extricate with only two on a truck. It's financially not feasible. You save more money by putting three on a truck. Plain and simple. I don't understand, maybe it's just me, how you can come up with a county fire department, but you can't negotiate working with the city? It doesn't make sense to me. I don't know where the money went that you're allocated for safety, but it seems like things are missing, in my opinion. And Mr. Velasquez, I agree with Mia Casey. Your constant barrage of insults and blaming her has gotten beyond ridiculous. That's the past. We need to focus on the future. Okay? I think we put everything that's in the past in the past and we go forward and we try to get these guys out there as safely as possible for all of us. And Mr. Maroni, thank you for all your work. Thank you.
In chambers, Mia Casey.
Hello again. So I'm not going to go through everything again. I just want to reiterate a couple of key points before you start talking about your fire department. First, I, I feel like it's absurd for the county to claim you can't afford a fire contract that has reliably served the unincorporated areas while at the same time you're pushing a plan to build your own department that's going to cost far more and offer less protection for county residents. Your fire consultant has already told you that it's going to cost a great deal per station plus equipment and staffing costs. No one has really publicly supported this idea and you've refused to listen to constituents who have asked you for collaboration, not division, and to work openly instead of behind closed doors and bring everyone to the table to work this agreement out. Second, the claims about fire costs skyrocketing are so off-base. If you look at all of your other county public safety budgets during that same 12-year time period, they all increased by 250 to 300%. And your sheriff's department and jail budget, which by the way, are both underfunded, they've just risen over 10 million. In fact, you gave them each a 2 million bump last year. But you only offer 1.1 million for fire and you act like any more than that is unreasonable? The fire chief's report has clearly showed county fire usage has increased. Why? Well, maybe it's because of the population growth in the unincorporated county. You've got 1,100 new homes at Santana Ranch, KB and other developments at Southside Road, the Promontory at Ridmark, and now you're building another 1,000 homes in San Juan Oaks. So of course your fire costs are going to go up. Instead of owning that reality, you've continued refusing to negotiate in good faith and you've wasted dollars on consultants and attorneys and now you sent that same low-ball offer back as some kind of ultimatum? Look, it's time to work together, not continue the politics, the divisive rhetoric, deflection and finger pointing at Hollister, San Juan Batista, or the firefighters. Your job is to listen and lead. Instead of asking why you should pay more, ask how you're going to meet your growing needs for fire service and be a good partner to the rest of the community. Pay your fair share and stop expecting Hollister taxpayers to continue to subsidize county service. Your constituents have been really clear about what they want and it's time for you to listen.
That concludes public comment.
Thank you very much. We'll bring it back to the board. Supervisor Curl, would you like to start?
Actually, I'd like to not start if that's okay.
Supervisor Velasquez?
Thank you so much.
I have plenty to say. And we'll go back again. I think there is a effort to rewrite history. Person made the comment, don't know where the money went. We know exactly where the money went. It went out the window. And again, I'll point out who caused this problem, first place. Former mayor Mia Casey, the former council, that misspent the city's money, City of Hollister's money, to the point where the city is in financial trouble. I don't blame the current council. I completely understand what they're up against. I don't blame the fire chief. This conversation of misinformation, of backroom deals is, again, just more nonsense. We have to move forward. We tried to do that. It's in our best interest to go ahead and start working with City of San Juan to create our own department. And I want to thank the chair, Cosmiki, for working with San Juan and actually having the beginnings of a conversation of creating that new partnership that we can hopefully create into a, a mutual interest even with the City of Hollister in the future, where we can help each other. But we have to move on. We can't just go back and forth and hope for a miracle to happen, money to fly back into the windows. That's just not the way it works. And it's, it's, what's done is done and we need to make sure we're planning a department that can cover our county correctly. Because we have areas as South County and different places, we need to make sure our covered better. Some may say, well, this is going to cost more. At the beginning, it will. But long-term, we're going to be able to provide better services and a better partnership with the City of Hollister to provide better service for the entire community. So that's what I'm looking forward to. And again, I'm absolutely looking forward to keep working with the chief and any ongoing discussions that we should have, I'm all for it. We should do everything we can to keep building partnerships, even if it's not a city-run department as in the past. We should definitely have a partnership between the county and the City of Hollister for the future because that's what we're going to get. And you know, for those that don't know, over 90% of the calls are medical. We need a better and faster response time for that and we're going to be looking into how we can provide that. Where we have those fires, we do need more personnel. That's why we have to bring back the reserve and the volunteer program. So we do have extra staff on hand when those fires break out. As we heard, we have a higher rating now from the state of high probability of fire, fire zones that we need to make sure we're, we're prepared for and have our residents in these remote areas covered and covered well. So I'm looking forward to it. I thank everyone that spent so much time working on this. And it's, it's hard. These are hard decisions, but we need to move forward. And again, thank you to everybody.
Great supervisor Zanger?
Yeah, thank you. I don't have a whole lot to say. I don't feel the need to repeat all my comments that we keep going through. So I will just question for any for deputy CAO here. Regarding the staff recommendation, I know you, so the, one of the bullet points on the recommendation was to provide or to schedule a meeting for the ad hoc, but you said that's, I guess, been done so we can--
Yes, that's, that's today at 3:30.
Okay, great. So, so that's done. And the other, the other thing would just be the, I see the consideration of pausing the feasibility study until a later date to be determined. I would support pausing that. I think I supported last time essentially pausing it. So I would support pausing that, moving forward with the ad hocks' work. That's all.
Supervisor Satello?
Thank you. I just want to be clear. The, what was in the staff report was, was relating to the ad hoc for the new county fire department. What you're talking about at 3:30 is the original ad hoc with the fire negotiating or with the fire?
No. The three, the 3:30 meeting today would be with the county, the new county fire ad hoc team.
Okay. So when city manager Maroni got up and said that he'd be sending an email, I was under the impression, are you going to be sending an email for the ad hocks to get together to negotiate? Again, okay, that's coming at a later date. That is not today at 3:30. Okay, perfect. Thank you. I just wanted to be clear on that. So unfortunately, I'm not in support of us doing a county fire department. I'm not in favor of us pausing the feasibility study. I really think that we need to continue moving forward on that. I think that is kind of our long-term solution. So I'm really appreciative and thankful that the city has, is willing to continue negotiating with us. I'm happy to see a 3-0 staffing. I was not in favor of our proposed 2-0 staffing. So, you know, I, I hope that the ad hoc that works, that the original ad hoc, not creating the fire department, county fire department, but I hope the original ad hoc is open and will continue negotiating and working with the city. Thank you.
I'll go if, if you want to go last. It does, okay, go ahead.
Okay, so one of the reasons I didn't want to go first is because I, I kind of had, I didn't want to repeat questions that we've already talked about. I am really happy to hear that the City of Hollister is willing to come forward with the negotiation ad hoc. I think that's a, a great move forward and I am very still supportive of the 3-0 staffing and trying to find a way of finding the funding and maybe being creative. One of the things we have not discussed in the 3-0 staffing is, we have said in a future agenda item, we'll be bringing forward for discussion is the $5 million that was set aside for the hospital district and the JPA formation. And in thinking about that, is that something that could be a conversation piece that the, the negotiation ad hoc could look at a JPA instead of an immediate fire district? A JPA can be formed much faster. It gives a lot more voice from the other jurisdictions. One of the challenges that I've had over the year, two years of being involved in any of this fire conversation is not feeling like the Board of Supervisors had a voice in the staffing or cost increases that were getting increased, but then we weren't really being proactive and we can rehash the former CAO and not having meetings, but bottom line is, we need 3-0 staffing to be able to keep our community safe, especially with this new fire map. It definitely is very eye-opening when you see the three areas of, of fire needs versus just the high-high. My other, my only other comment would be, I'm, I, even though I'm on the ad hoc for forming a fire department, we're going to have to find funding to form a fire department, just like funding a fire department. So we have to have this conversation and I'm hopeful that in looking at a fire department between San Juan Batista and the, the county of San Benito is that we can look at things in a out-of-the-box kind of discussion. So I, I just wanted to thank the City of Hollister for agreeing to continue the negotiations with San Benito and Holli, and San Juan Batista. And that's pretty much all I have to say at this point and we'll do an update after our meeting this afternoon.
Thank you very much. I have a question for, maybe it's the city manager or the chief as far as really, you know, the evolution of how we got here and the latest kind of statement the city has sent. And so just as a recollection, we, you know, we got the 270. We negotiated the first part of this year with the new council. It was about two months of negotiations on a regular basis. We agreed on terms between those ad hocks. It went to the Hollister City Council. The city council initially agreed to those terms. The county board initially agreed to those terms, understanding that the 2-0 staffing, and this is what the city, throughout these negotiations, was very clear to us about, that the 2-0 staffing is what we can afford. And so that's basically how we got to that point. The city made it clear to us as a county and we also agreed that our current contract is 2-0 staffing. We're willing to keep it at 2-0 staffing. The city is looking at actually following through on the 2-0 staffing as opposed to the 3-0 staffing that we, the city went off and had without the county's consent for the last several years, to bring down those costs, to bring down overtime costs, which have been, you know, contributor to the budget challenge. Because when you have higher minimum staffing and we went through this, it means you're, especially when there's folks that are out on workers' comp or vacations and all that, that you have to fill those shifts with a 3-0 versus a 2-0. There's more of a burden to fill those shifts, which inherently creates more overtime. And, you know, we went through this whole process. We both agreed to those terms. Then there was that week where things got a little bumpy and it ended up with the Hollister City Council taking a step back, saying, we're no longer willing to, to do the 2-0 staffing. The terms of our agreement that we just spent two months on are off the table. And basically, San Juan and San Juan County, we want $3.9 million more. You figure it out. We're not going to participate in the negotiation. You figure it out. We had a meeting where we requested and invited all three parties to the table. San Benito County ad hoc, the San Juan Batista ad hoc, the Hollister ad hoc, city staff, county staff, fire chief. The county and the City of San Juan were there. The fire chief was there. City of Hollister ad hoc was not there. You were not there. You communicated to us, you were not authorized to negotiate, that it was basically on us to come up, figure it out. And, and, and we've been very clear to this point that not only is it not affordable in the current term, in the current times with the $3.9 million plus the 8% escalators, that over time, you know, again, I really think we need to get some sort of, a more in-depth analysis of where this thing is going because that's, as stewards of taxpayers' dollars, we've recognized that this, this is not sustainable, at least some of us have. And that cost challenge needs to be addressed. And staying with the current model does not address that cost challenge. And so my question with all the context that I've just laid out is, how, you, the city basically told us that we need 2.5, around roughly 2.5, 2.6, somewhere in there, a million dollars above what was already on the table to accommodate the 3-0 staffing. What kind of dollar amounts are we talking about? Because that's what we were told. We were told, what I'm getting at is we're kind of getting yanked back and forth here over the last several months. And now we're being told, well, now that you've put your, your offer back on the table, let's negotiate again. What is this going to, let's get down to the brass tacks here. What kind of dollar amounts are we talking about? Because we have to focus on our other option, which is creating a fire department because the city has given us a very firm, two very firm timelines. So what kind of dollar amounts are we talking about? So what kind of dollar amounts are we talking about?
Sure. So if, if I can just take a step back and kind of walk through. So I would take it back even further than when the new council met. The original offer that we had put forward to both the county and San Juan was a total that first, this current fiscal year of 3.95 of a million of additional costs. That was where San Juan had agreed in October. We had said we would bring that forward when the county agreed. Our, our position all along has been when we have two agreed deals, we would bring those collectively, right? Because it is a symbiotic relationship to serve both. That happened with the count, or with San Juan. They passed it mid-October. The county's position was take the 270 day off for us to even be told a response to, to the figure. Fast forward, January comes in or so, we have the, the, the position to take the two seventy off, form the ad hocs. Those ad hocs go and meet. And yes, that was the deal that was brought back. Was that 1.25. You're correct. The county's deal has been minimum two throughout the evolution of that contract. San Juan's did go to three in the final iteration of that contract in 2019. And those agreements then came before our city council. They did approve. Those came here and to San Juan. It was rejected here with a counter of to take the brown adding language out, which is a mechanism. We don't know what the economy, we're, we're all talking about the economy could take a tumble any day. We're feeling it. We're already feeling it. And so to have a three-year no termination, basically unless you guys don't pay a check, cut a check. That is a tool. If you, you, we don't know how the economy is going to turn, but what that would have done was locked us in, right? And we wouldn't have had that ability. So by taking that off, that, that's a new term. And so then San Juan said, no, thank you. Go back and negotiate. So when we brought that back, there was a, a public outcry. There was a request for us to have the fire chief involved, come back, come back with options. And that's what the council looked at. And so the council came back, we laid out a series of, I believe, six options for a negotiating framework. They went with option E. We then sat down with that group, with the fire chief and the fire union president, our negotiating ad hoc, and looked at it from a different methodology. And I think Chief Goulding went over it last time. And so with that methodology and the, you know, basically the, the request from the community, the request from the experts to keep it at three O, we looked at that pricing model. Whereas the, the model agreed to through the ad hocs was more of a, you know, that was between the ad hocs of here's what we can bring to the table. Here's the county's position and here's what we can add to the, to, to the pot to help out, right? And so when the council then came back and looked at that and brought this deal forward, for 2425, there's the request of 1.25 million. That is what the requests, or that is what the county and San Juan are currently offering right now. And so then for 2526, that's where the 3.9 million comes in. So we went from 3.95 in 2425 to 1.25 with an escalator going from 11%. We did bring that down to 8%. So I've heard a few times, it was mentioned last night in public comment, well, 3.9, it's. Fortunately, the way it works, the chief landed on that number through, through our, our work and looking at a mutual benefit. But it's not square one. If I do the totality of the original deal and then I take the totality, think of it as three deals. What we originally slid forward, what the ad hocs in January through March worked on, and then what's currently on the table right now. It's 4.7 million dollars less from what was asked for in August to what's being asked for now over, over a total of four years. So it's not square one. It's actually giving the county and San Juan the deal they're asking for in this current year and then taking the deal that we asked for, for 2425 and bringing that forward in 2526. We felt that this was a fair share for our taxpayers. It was basically a, a sixty forty split. And so we did have conversations. I know there was concerns about the escalator. There's been concerns, you know, there's also, you know, I've, I've brought it out that there is not any indirect or an admin rate, which you see normally with contracts. So that's, that's not in there. So none of my time, none of my payroll team's time, H R, you know, workers' comp, we build into the budget. But none of the, the costs that go in to the backend of this service is even contemplated in this. And yes, services are, are expensive. I mean, it's just fire service in general are expensive. If we look, you know, I saw a press release just recently about the mobile crisis service that the county is rolling out. You know, and that's with behavioral health dollars. That's subvented dollars. And we talked about, you know, one and a half calls a day on average that that could be at 2.4 million dollars. If I just take and look at the rate per call and take the number of calls that the county and San Juan had in 2024 and just say, here's an idea, pay us what you're paying Pacific clinics to come down with two paraprofessionals in their own vehicles with a 60-minute response time and 120-minute response time, our request would be 8.6 million. We're asking for 6.5 million. Now I get it. That's subvented funding. General fund is much different, but it's just to reflect that, that the costs are, the costs are expensive. And so this is the reality that all cities and counties are facing. It is, you know, it's, it costs a lot to put a fire department together. And so I wanted to give some of that context back of how it went from, you know, one deal to the second to the third. We are now willing, I mean, we're willing all along. It was just that first meeting, we said, go, go, go meet, go talk. Look over our deal. It's just like when you're doing bargaining. You don't have the two, you know, the county and your bargaining groups sitting at the table the whole time. They go caucus, right? Go talk, look at the deal, come back. We talked last night. Sure, we're willing to come to the table. Like I said, we're going to, we're going to send over an agreement. It wasn't just take it or leave it. I think supervisor Satello even asked that at the last meeting. Is this best and final? It's no, we're still going to talk. It's just, we're, we're laying this out in front of you. But I think the premise of three O is something that, that our council is standing behind. And they don't want to subcontract out a service that puts the, the, the lives of our firefighters potentially in jeopardy.
Okay, yeah. And what I'm overall, excuse me, what I'm overall getting at though is that the conversation when we started this was what we can afford. We all want three O, we all want four O. We'd love to have 15 fire stations throughout the community. That would be fantastic. We have to do what we can afford. And the conversation was about how can we contain these unsustainable costs? That was the, that was the conversation. That was the focus for two months. And there was an acknowledgement from Hollister and the county that, that we have to address the cost challenge. And there was, what I see was a more realistic, reasonable view of how we're going to address the fiscal challenge. And it's not just this year or next year. This is a fiscal challenge. It is only going to get worse. And I wish there was an acknowledgement of that from somebody other than the majority of this board. And so that's shifted from when we started this conversation. It shifted from how are we going to control costs and try to maintain reasonable services to we're just stuck on this three O staffing even though we can't afford it. And as for browning out, these latest positions from Hollister, as we've been yanked back and forth for the past month or two, haven't been about the browning out. The latest positions have been about the three O staffing. And from what we understand, the three O staffing, and you've made it clear with the, the figures that you provided, which is basically two and a half million dollars more, that the three O staffing is going to basically cost we as a community, two and a half million dollars more than what was on the table. So we, we actually kind of know what the number is. Whether it's Hollister wants to sit down and fudge with numbers, we know what the number is. And, and we're still not addressing our overall community's unsustainable trajectory for fire department services. And that's the larger issue here. And I want to be clear that the county didn't come up with this browning out concept. The county didn't come up with the browning out concept. And, and it, and frankly, it was a mistake to have the browning out in the recommendation to begin with. And I think it would have, it would have probably helped with a lot of the rhetoric that was going around about closing stations and this and that. If we had not had that in, that was, that was regrettable on everyone's part. As far as the retroactive, I get what you're saying. We'll, we'll pay what we want, you know, for last year. But then going forward in perpetuity, we're, and we're going to pay these extravagantly higher numbers. That's, that's not a reasonable balance of our position versus your position. As far as a J P A or not, I think that's, it's fine and dandy if we're in a position of cooperation. But we still have, we still are not on the same page when it comes to this unsustainable trajectory. And so I just, I don't see how we can go down, continue to go down these paths without addressing that. Just real quick, I'll try to, I'll try to be quick here because I tried, I want to try to provide context beyond what's been stated. For me, I met with the interim city manager of San Juan in early April, laid out the county's financial position, our constraints, the budget that we're dealing with, which is very challenging. Even taking that $5 million back from the hospital allocation, we still have a deficit to deal with. So laid all that out. Initial conversation was to have all three jurisdictions together. You know, we had a very productive meeting. And that's where it really kind of sparked the conversation about, hey, if, if this doesn't work out, Hollister's unwilling to consider what we have to offer, we should look at potentially a partnership. It only makes sense. And so again, that meeting on April 11th between all three ad hocs that we tried to invite was, it was supposed to involve everybody. It only involved the two. And I'll just say, I'm, I'm very pleased and optimistic to see the potential for a San Juan County partnership on a fire department model, especially considering the timeline that the city of Hollister has forced upon us with the initial deadline and then the 270-day clock that's well on its way to ticking. We have to move forward expediently as a county. We can't keep doing this back and forth game that's going on. And I'd like to see the new ad hoc with supervisor Velazquez and Curro. For me, I would really like to start with a checklist. I know our staff and consultants are aware of this, but since we're here to give our direction, I would like to see a checklist of all the necessary elements in creating a fire department, starting with the hiring of a fire chief, the rough timeline, and have regular updates on a monthly basis here at the board at the least in between those conversations. And we just need to start moving forward as a county and move our way through that checklist. We can't keep doing this because we're going to run out of time. And we also need to be expedient in the hiring and all the steps that are involved as much as we can. I could very well see San Juan, the San Juan station being the first station in a, in a fire department model and working our way from there. Potentially San Juan being the headquarters of a fire department. It's already there. They have an engine. They have equipment. County could work with San Juan on figuring out a financial split for personnel that's affordable for San Juan. And from there, we would look at our second location potential. And I would hope that the city of Hollister would work with us because we do still want to have, you know, good services as a whole in our community. And we would start looking at a second location for a fire department and what it would take to get that up and running as quickly as possible. And I think we could look at more beyond that from there to make sure that all our areas are covered. And ultimately, the goal is to have the best services possible that, and, and what is affordable and to control the costs that to me are just unsustainable at this point. I think we can work toward a volunteer reserve system to offset the financial burdens. I'd like us to work toward more paramedic services. Throughout the county, the vast majority calls are EMS, less than 3% of calls are fire calls. And lastly, I agree that we can't, I, I, I can't agree with continuing on with this back and forth. You know, we've got to, we've got to, we've got to move forward. We did negotiate. We negotiated for two months. We came to terms on an agreement. The city has made it clear then, is making it clear now, that they want the additional multi-millions of dollars for three O staffing that we cannot afford. And, and I'm going to make it clear again, adding millions of dollars to fire services in a budget that's already a deficit budget will inherently mean cuts elsewhere in our county. That will be painful. And, and I will also re-clarify what supervisor Velazquez said, that yes, there will be costs to start a fire department. Those would be startup costs, one-time costs. The big difference in this whole conversation that seems to be getting lost is one-time versus operational. I am concerned about the operational ongoing costs. And we would have the ability to control those with our own fire department. I agree with the pause on the feasibility study. There's just too many uncertainties. It's unrealistic to do, have a feasibility study question on the 2026 ballot at this point anyway. And aside from that, I would recommend that we suspend the negotiation ad hoc so we can focus on creating a new fire department. Anything further?
I did want, I did want to mention, just to add to this, is that the city has not withdrawn its demand of the 1.3 million payment, which was due on May 9th, which is coming up, which is 17 days away. So I just wanted to add that as well.
Thank you. Further questions and comments?
Yes, Mr. Chair. And again, I, I want to say thank you to the city manager. I know you've tried hard and the chief. You made a comment about public outcry. The problem is, public outcry has been based on false information that keeps getting spread, I'm going to say it again, by former mayor Mia Casey, who comes in here and says, $20 million has disappeared from the county for public safety. Absolutely false. That money's gone to sheriff's department, it's gone to probation, fire, it didn't disappear. It's 4.2 million dollars a year that comes in and is dedicated to public safety. So false information that continues to get spread by a few people to enrage the public doesn't help any of us. It's just more false information. And we have to, again, the, the longer we're going back and forth on this, we're hearing more of these things. You heard the person talk about, everything's fine at the city because all we did was use reserves to pay off the bills. That's a first sign of a major problem coming at you. And it's the last thing now as a supervisor I'm going to be involved with. I know what's coming at us. It's very clear. And if we don't as a county or local agencies figure this out, not just the fire contract, but our budgets, we're going to be in a world of hurt that we really shouldn't be in. We just have to be smart, all of us as a team, do the, I don't want to say cuts, but we need to reduce some of the spending and make sure we're whole so we can survive the rough times that are coming, because they're coming, guys. They're, they're just coming. And if we're not, as soon as we start pulling money from reserves to start paying bills, that's your sign. That's the sign. There is, again, this conversation of hospital money. Well, that's, that's one time. One-time monies do not solve ongoing costs. We got to be clear about that because this is how we got into this situation in the first place. Again, I'm looking forward to working with Hollister, the fire department as, as partners in the future. And I think we can. And I think that's how we're going to end up providing better service all the way around. We just can't afford what's being asked of us. We just can't. And to say otherwise is really lying to the public, which is going to create a bigger failure down the road. It's just time to be honest. Hey, let's work on something that we can do together that's better in the long term. It's going to benefit all of us. So I agree. I don't think we should go on with the negotiation. I think we, we sent back our offer. I want to hear Hollister say yes or no to that offer. And we move on and we start working together again. How do we provide services together in the future? I know we will. So thank you.
Anything further? Entertain a motion or direction? Oh, go ahead, supervisor Curro.
So just understanding from what the chair and supervisor Velazquez has said, you are not recommending that we continue the negotiation ad hoc now that the city of Hollister is willing to come to the table and actually negotiate. I just want to make sure I understand what happened at yesterday's meeting. The city is willing to come to the table and negotiate?
Yes, the city's been willing. It was just the first, like, here's our proposal, go talk. And then the next day was a recommendation of this group to, your action was to invite all three to the table. As the service provider, we were saying, here's what we would like you to do. Go meet, talk about this. So it wasn't a, the city changed course and changed position about wanting to negotiate. That was not the case. So I just want to clarify that. I've clarified it at the San Juan meeting last night as well. So that, that was not the position of the city. However, when we, the direction I had was to provide the offer and ask you guys to go talk and meet about it. Of course, we expected you to come back after talking and meeting about it. And we also said, you know, have the fire chief there. He's your fire chief as well. And then we'll sit down and talk. And then you provided an offer back. And so with that offer, we took it to the council, talked about it last night, and the council gave the direction that, yeah, we want to continue talking. But at three O, both the offers were at two O.
But at 3-0, both the offers were at 2-0.
Okay, my, my, I, I feel like it, in that San Juan Batista meeting, um, several weeks ago, it was very obvious they wanted all three ad hocks together. That's what San Juan wanted. I felt like from this board, that's what we wanted. I, I, I can't speak for everybody, but I feel like, you know, that's what we wanted. And now we're willing to do it, but now we're going to walk away from it. So I have a concern with that. The feasibility study, the question was, can the feasibility, this was the original question from the prior board meeting, was can the feasibility study move forward while we're negotiating? Well, I don't feel like any fire district, which is, is, is staffed by Cal Fire, if they're at a 3-0 and they have an auto aid agreement with San Juan Batista, and San Juan Batista goes down to a 2-0, does that mean that auto aid agreement is gone and that they will have to then pay for added services? I just, I'm, I'm not asking right now for you to address each of these questions. These are the questions that I feel like need to be discussed at the ad hoc to look at a new fire department and what the actual costs are. And the ad hoc for negotiating, uh, future, um, multi-jurisdiction agreement.
So, so to be, to clarify some things, Aroma Stride Counties is approved for three-person. Right now they only have two people.
Recording in progress.
Go ahead, sorry, chief.
Sorry, technical difficulties.
They are moving towards that third person, but currently are at two people. Um, and then the auto aid agreements, auto aid agreements, any two jurisdictions can have an auto aid agreement. The two jurisdictions have to agree that the reciprocity that they're going to get is going to be sufficient for what they're providing. So there's, it's not a fine line. A lot of the things that, that you guys are discussing and that we talk about, um, they're not, they're not very specific fine lines. It's, it's based upon, is there going to be enough, like the auto aid agreement, is there going to be enough reciprocity? Um, if they do not believe there's going to be enough reciprocity, then usually the two parties won't enter into an auto aid agreement. So there's nothing to say that San Juan could or couldn't be in an auto aid agreement with Aroma Stride Counties. Um, because we are currently in an auto aid agreement with Aroma Stride Counties, even though they're at two-person staffing, um, going to three-person staffing. But the closer you can get to reciprocity is the more likely that you can reach an agreement for auto aid. So specifically, if you look at Cal Fire, um, in San Benito County, we do not have an auto aid agreement with them because they don't provide the same reciprocity back to us that we would provide to them. So we rely on mutual aid versus auto aid.
And mutual aid, if mutual aid is provided, is that, is there a charge to having mutual aid to the jurisdiction?
Generally speaking, no. Um, through the California Master Mutual Aid Agreement, um, that is an agreement where we will send aid if requested and vice versa. Um, however, the denial of mutual aid is more common than the denial of auto aid because auto aid, you just automatically get dispatched if it's one of your calls. Mutual aid, um, more often will get denied. Where the cost comes in is when one department is overburdening another department, then they start billing for the services. Usually those are worked out through an agreement, through a contract of some sort. Um, so for example, Cal Fire does not have, the entirety of Cal Fire owns one water tender. That water tender sits at their training facility in Ione, and it does not go on calls. So we have an assistance by hire agreement for Cal Fire that generally when we go out on master mutual aid, the first 12 hours is free. So if you look at like Clean Green Recycling, that, that fire that happened there, we were on that fire for a week straight. Had we been there, then yes, you would have had to pay us, um, our OES rates back for that. But if it's less than 12 hours, um, you don't pay for it. With, because of the demand that Cal Fire has, in this case for like the water tenders, anything over two hours, they start paying us. So there's usually agreements that come into play. I know Paro Valley and Watsville, they have an agreement that they go to the calls, they pay a certain amount. Those are all agreements that are usually worked out ahead of time. Um, where it gets a little more difficult is if one department is being overburdened, um, then you start the legal proceedings of saying, we're going to bill you. Um, that's a little bit more of a murkier process. But, um, I'm vested regardless of whether you guys stay with Hollister Fire, which is what I would prefer, or if you guys stand up your own fire department, I'm vested in you guys having a solid fire department because what your fire department looks like absolutely will affect me, both when I respond to your calls or when you guys respond to our calls. Um, I think the depth and totality of what services we provide to you is probably not well-known. Um, I know your consultants have never sat down with me and asked what services we provide. Um, but there is pretty in-depth services that we provide. I have started putting together a list for both San Juan and the county. Um, so if you guys do explore these other things, I can, I can show you all the additional things that we provide to you, um, that when you think of a fire department, may not necessarily be there. Um, but working through those details, um, there's a lot there that needs to be done. The mutual aid, auto aid agreements, I, I hear a lot at these meetings of people's interpretations of what it is. Um, and looking at it as very specific lines, it's not like that. The auto aid, it doesn't say you have to have exactly like-for-like. It's just generally departments will not sign auto aids if you can't provide, you know, the exact same reciprocity.
Thank you. Those are all my questions.
Thank you, Supervisor Velazquez.
Yeah, I just want to go back to, look, are we saying absolutely no more negotiation? No. But we know the, the offer, it was made clear by the city, you want three staffing. You had a number for it. Is the city going to send back another offer? We can't, in other words, we can't just go back and forth. Do we add a hundred dollars to this? A thousand dollars to us? Is it $10,000? Is that yes or no? What, what is that final offer from the city? So we know what we're working with. We can't come back for the next six months going back and forth. You guys are busy, we're all busy. Let's just hear it. Put it on the table. If it's going to be three, that it's all minimum, and it's a $3.9 million increase, as was put on the table before, just say it. Say that's it. So we can move forward and move on to whatever we have to do, all of us together. That's, I think, the point of, there's a, there's got to be an end to the negotiations, otherwise it's just going to drag on. As far as, um, working towards a study for a district, a district requires all three or all entire, entire community, community participating and realizing there's a parcel tax with that throughout the county. And if we're, if we can't get this part together, what's the likelihood of that happening in time for the next election? And the likelihood is very low, extremely low. And if we don't have it done in time for that, by the time it's ready for another election, we're going to have to do another up, study to update the information. So it doesn't make a lot of sense to try to do the study right now to try to move forward to a district. Just doesn't. I mean, if we can ask the public, public, are you willing to pay $1,500 extra a year for property? $500? Maybe that's a question we could put out. But to do a study, these are all the pieces to it, and the public needs to be aware of that. It's not something that's going to magically happen, and there's no cost to this. There's a very high cost to it. So I personally don't want to be in a situation going back and forth. Again, no ill will to the city, the current council. You guys are trying to do the best you can with the budget you have. And I understand you have severe issues coming too. You're going to have to make sure you're covered the best you can. I'm not asking you to cover the rest of the county financially because you can't afford it. I get it. But at the same time, we have to look at it from the county side. How do we make sure we're providing services for our part of the community? And it can tie back again as partners with the city of Hollister. So we're, again, providing the service, if not better service, in a different way. Thanks.
Thank you. And I, I just want to also just clarify, at least from our perspective, you know, I thought it was crystal clear last time around after the city first, I would say, switched gears, we had that week, and then the city switched gears that Friday night. Um, that, it was my understanding that there's the number, you all figure it out. And to me, that's saying, we're not willing to negotiate with you anymore. I think that was, I think it's fair to say that was the perspective from the city of Hollister. You all figure out the $3.9 million. That's not saying, let's all get in a room and talk further, because we invited the city back to have a discussion. I want to make it crystal clear, when I brought that meeting up, it was on the agenda to potentially eliminate the ad hoc, the negotiation ad hoc, that that meeting was meant to just have a conversation. It was just meant to have a conversation about where we're all at, to hear each other out. We hear all this in the community about, you all don't get in the room, you're not, you're not talking with one another. We just wanted to have a conversation. And for the city of Hollister to just not show up to a conversation, made it, and to have people telling us that they were not, they're not willing to talk further about the $3.9 million, I take that as that they're not willing to negotiate. And if the city of Hollister has an offer, it would like to, we, we've got to, we've got to move forward somewhere, this county. And right now we have, it's our responsibility to look at alternatives, including a fire department. We have to move forward on that. We have limited resources. We can't spend all this time going back and forth. If the city of Hollister would like to propose a number, it's not $3.9 million, and wants to put a number out there, um, knowing with certainty that San Juan cannot afford more than its, we all know, cannot afford more than it's currently offering. So the county's essentially picking up the tab, then I would be certainly happy to consider an offer. But I don't think it's fruitful for us to get around and just throw random numbers out at each other. Because the city has already thrown out a number. And if there's a different number, then I, I'd certainly be willing to listen to that. Thank you. Anything further? Go ahead, Supervisor Setello.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I'm just curious, can we have both ad hocks working simultaneously? And I mean, I get, I, I get that you're a little frustrated with the process, but I think that there are things to even look at. I, I think I threw out at one point, like, could we look at, based on, um, all of our populations? Because right now there's a 60-40 split, that is not the population split. And so I think there are opportunities for us to even, beyond just the dollar amount, even look at the methodology. We may be able to get to a better number, but I think that's where the negotiations can really help, um, everybody kind of getting in that room, especially if everybody is there. Um, we, we have to kind of, um, yes, that happened in the past, but moving forward, how can this look? And I think that it is worthy of us spending some time. And so I would like to see both of our ad hocks kind of work, um, simultaneously, if, if that's, um, if that's possible.
To clarify, just that would create a quorum of the board, because there'd be three, so it would have to either be a public.
No, I don't mean at the same time. I mean, working on both, uh, topics. Thank you.
Got it. Thank you for that. Supervisor Zenger?
Yeah, I'll, I'll just say, I think at a certain point, we need to do something, we need to move because we're wasting time that we don't have. I, I guess that I'm interested in setting up our own fire. Excuse me, my mic wasn't on, sorry about that. I'm interested in setting up our own fire department. Um, we don't have unlimited time. We need to get to work on these things. Um, if the city has a different number they want to throw out, we can, we can entertain that, we can hear that. But that also doesn't solve the issue of the county not having say over what's been going on and the trend that we see with the cost. And so that trend isn't addressed, it doesn't really solve the issue at all. We're just going to be back here again in some time. And so I'm interested in exploring our own department and at least doing a lot of the preliminary work so we can get an idea of what that would look like. Um, that's where I want to move forward with at this point. I think we need to move forward on that rather quickly, actually.
Uh, let's try to wrap up briefly, Supervisor Velazquez.
Yeah, I agree with Supervisor Zenger. You know, I think the, the time has come to end the negotiating ad hoc. But that doesn't mean the city of Hollister cannot bring a proposal to the entire board. What I don't want to see happen any longer are these accusations of closed-door dealings because of an ad hoc. That's not whatever happened here. We were all upfront about all this information, but that time has come to an end. If there's another number from the city of Hollister, bring it to the entire board and we can discuss it. But I think it's time we move on. I would agree with Supervisor Zenger.
Appreciate that. Uh, I'll, I'll just say again, we got to address the cost challenge. If we're not addressing the cost challenge, we're all kicking the can down the road. Um, I would entertain a motion to give direction, as stated in the, um, staff report, um, to, uh, start the ad hoc discussions on creating a new fire department. I would suggest starting with, um, you know, work, I think the consultants and staff in the ad hoc are certainly capable, but working through what are the, what is the checklist of things to do, the priorities, developing those priorities, coming back to the board on a monthly basis to, uh, update us and get further direction from the entire board as this process goes forward. I would recommend, um, agreeing to pause the feasibility study due to the uncertain, uh, uncertainties we're now facing, and to suspend the, uh, negotiation ad hoc and be open to the city of Hollister providing a further proposal. Entertain a motion.
So moved.
We have first, we have a second.
Second.
All is in favor, roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Cosmiki?
Yes.
Supervisor Zenger?
Yes.
Supervisor Setello?
No.
Supervisor Curro?
No.
Supervisor Velazquez?
Yes.
Three, two vote, motion passes.
Thank you very much. That would take us to item 2.2. This is the sheriff's office. Um, do we need a break, anyone, or we? Okay, we're going to, sorry sheriff, we're going to take a five-minute break and we'll get right back. Thank you.
Recording in progress.
Thank you, everybody. We'll call the meeting back to order. We're on regular item 2.2. Sheriff Taylor, receive update on request for proposal process for inmate medical services. Acknowledge that Medico received the highest evaluation score from the selection committee and direct staff to begin contract negotiations and prepare a final agreement to be presented May 6th. Sheriff?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Good, the timer hasn't started yet. So I'll go, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll go as quickly as I can through this PowerPoint. I just want to real quick thank Chief Canes, Janay Hopkins from our office, Rene Henklet from probation, Barbara Thompson from counsel and Commander Corral for all their work on their, on this RFP and everything that we've done. And and I'll introduce our partners from Medico here in a second. But the purpose of this agenda item is to receive an update on inmate medical services. Acknowledge that Medico was ranked as the top ranked proposer and hopefully have the board direct staff to negotiate and return with an agreement on May 6th, 2025. Because time is of the essence as our other contract will be expiring. A background here, California Forensic Medical Group, CFMG, has served the county for more than 20 years. Most recent contract began in 2019. We've done a lot of one off extensions of these contracts. Current contract expires on June 30th of 2025. An RFP was issued to evaluate new providers and ensure cost effectiveness. The RFP process was issued on February 20, February 1st of 2025. A site visit was conducted by our staff and and the the people that put in for this RFP on February 28th, 2025. They had a due date of March 14th. We had a total of three proposals come in from Medico Correctional Healthcare, also referred to as Medico, from Wellpath LLC, formerly CFMG, now Wellpath, and Correctional Healthcare Partners Incorporated, CHP. The evaluation criteria were as follows. Experience and qualifications were weighted at 35%. The scope and methodology was weighted at 40% and the cost was weighted at 25%. We had a five member evaluation committee comprised of our office, a member of your board of supervisors, members of probation, and I believe we had represented from the county as well. Interviews were held on April 2nd of 2025. Medico received a unanimous top ranking. They scored 100 points above the next proposal with an average score of 930.8 out of 1,000. The next highest respondent was 769.2. So they very much outperformed the other two. Just so you give you some ideas of the comparisons between the three proposals that we had for their staffing level recommendations for FTEs. Medico's recommended is 11.75 with a base or a minimum of 10.25. Wellpath came in at 11.07 and a half. Their base was 9.45 and CHP option one was 10.4 and option two was 9.9 FTEs. The cost comparison, as labeled, was Medico's recommended is $3.5 million a year with their base being $3.1 million a year. I have the doctor here to maybe explain that if you have questions. Wellpath was at 3.1 and 2.9 respective and CHP came in at three, just under 3.2, 3.1, 3.15. The highlights for Medico is they have 28 years of experience and 50 plus facilities. They've increased coordination through monthly operational meetings, monthly contract management meetings and annual reports. Most important for us is they have a patient first philosophy. They are dedicated to quality improvement and staff training. And really, I already said most important, but equally as important is CalAim compliance, which is a new law that went into effect that we must adhere to with CalAim. And they are CalAim compliant. They have a great scope of services in the transition plan as well. Our recommendation to the board would be to begin negotiations with Medico. Proceed with the recommended 11.75 FTE level, so we're not shooting for minimums. Return, we would return to the board on May 6th with a proposed agreement. Be a five contract, five year contract term with optional extensions. And if desired, you could direct staff whether to include prepayment clause of 100,000 or 150,000 cap. Just before I invite Dr. O up here, Dr. O fog from Medico and Andrew Small, his partner. I just want to touch on a few things and then I'm going to get out of here and then be available for your questions. The main focus for our office is the morality and the support of our incarcerated, the morality of supporting our incarcerated population with quality medical, with providing quality medical care. There's state mandates in Title 15, but there's also a morality part of this. The people in custody don't have a choice and we need to provide them with with good medical care. The second thing is liability. We had three submitters for this RFP. I was not in favor of going to RFP. I know it's something that the board wanted. This is something, this is one of the ones that definitely qualifies for a sole source agreement. But our team here was insistent on the RFP and I appreciate that. I I have a lot more clarity now that we did that. And I know that was a thing that the board had wanted us to do is go to RFP. So I think that we fulfilled that obligation to the board. We had three submitters and there was a clear winner here. We've included people from across the county in our rating process. Medico's plan includes a discharge planner, LVN and RN. So when we have the RN that has to go over to the juvenile facility, we still have an LVN on staff in the jail at all times, which we do not currently have. They also cover mental health and crisis response. Unfortunately, behavioral health in this county will not provide service to the jail. So $600,000 of this contract is based on the fact that behavioral health no longer responds to the jail and we have a mandate that we have to provide that service. Discharge planning is part of CalAim and that is covered in this contract. We cannot go with Wellpath. They're under, I counsel can stop me if I talk off point here, but they're going through bankruptcy right now. They've been underperforming for us. It's not, it's not even an option for us, to be honest with you. And the other thing for this, by by going to RFP and bringing you a five year contract that's all inclusive, 24 hour coverage with medical, with behavioral health and crisis response, we're going to get away from, I think, something that's bothered you over the years, Mr. Chair, is keep coming back with these one offs. Let's increase this coverage here, add this coverage there, come back at midyear. We need more money. This is an all inclusive deal that we would just know going out into the future what our costs are going to be. The contract with Medico will cover all mandates while reducing liability to the county and will ensure that all services are provided and we cover the continuity of care that we should be focused on as a county. It also ensures our compliance with CalAim mandates. The last thing that I will leave you is with the remainder of this fiscal year into the next fiscal year, we have the funding to cover this, which would not come from general fund. So we've already budgeted 2.5 million. We have the million dollars to be because Rene wrote a grant through the state, through CalAim and was awarded a large sum of money that we can use to implement this. And as we go forward, we will be able to then bill the state for services, which we are never allowed to bill the state for before. We don't know what those revenue projections are going to look like, but that's part of what the discharge planning is so important to have 24 hour discharge planning because it will be a revenue stream from the state, from Medi-Cal back into our our county for these services. And it's really hard to predict right now where that's going to be. I took up a lot more time than I should have. Let me invite Dr. O up here just to give his comments.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Good morning. Thank you. It's an honor to be here to present our case. My name is Dr. O fog. I'm an internal medicine physician. I have been a California licensed physician for the past 30 years. About 30 years ago, 38 years ago, my plane landed in San Jose. I started from scratch, passed my boards of medicine. I became assistant professor of the business emergency room in Virginia and I formed this company as a sole owner, founder of this company called Medico that you see today. Medico is very important to me and I really believe in the mission of this company that I put my own initials as part of the name of this company. KO stands as my initials. We have been in business for 28 years. Currently, we provide services in 25 different correctional facilities, mainly in East Coast and Mid Atlantic region. We are the only company in the field of correctional medicine in the nation, not just California. It doesn't exist in California anyway. In the nation that hasn't had a single judgment in this highly litigious environment of correctional healthcare. I'm very proud of that fact. And that is only because I, as the sole owner and operator of this company, I kept the DNA of medical to be medically and not financially driven. We do not take shortcuts and we do not provide inadequate level of staffing for our correctional facilities and the incarcerated individuals who have somebody out there who loves them, who are constitutionally entitled to receive adequate, timely, proactive healthcare services, including medical and mental health services. This is short and sweet of medical. We look forward to partner with San Benito County Sheriff's Office to be our first contractor partner in the great set of California, which have been licensing for 30 years, long time. And we have recruited a very strong regional manager for our operation who lives in Northern California. And we have an office in downtown San Jose on 4th Street about eight months ago. I'm a visionary person. I'm a visionary leader and I felt the level of services that California requires now, more than ever, matches our DNA. We look to provide adequate proactive good care for the individuals that are incarcerated. And I think California is one of the few states that is very proactive in delivering that message. We think it's the right match, it's the right time, in the right state. I'd be glad to answer any question that you may have.
Thank you very much. We'll go to pub, unless there's something further from the sheriff or any other. I just wanted to point out that we have Chief Canes here and our our team members here to answer any questions or if the chief, I don't know if you want to speak, you probably, you're saying no. But this also encompasses that our youth services center response to them too for coverage. So thank you. Okay, we'll go to public comment and then we'll come back for further questions and comments.
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card. On Zoom, please press star nine or the raised end icon. And I have no public comment.
Bring it back to the board. We'll start with Supervisor Satello, if you'd like.
Thank you. I'm incredibly supportive of this. I actually was included in the panel, so I got to participate, got to see all three proposals. I appreciate kind of your just level of care and quite a record, not having any judgments against you. And so I appreciate you not taking shortcuts and really making care a priority. So I'm incredibly supportive of this and I appreciate, Renee, thank you for getting the grant. And it'll be really interesting to see moving forward what what the revenue will look like coming in from the state when we're able to bill for the services. But I know that's an unknown right now. Happy that we've got the funding to be able to cover it at the moment, to enter into it. So I'm supportive of this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Zenger?
Yeah, thank you. I thank you. Question for Sheriff Terry, whoever wants to answer it basically. Can someone go through, just briefly explain the 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 recommended staffing versus the base staffing? And what exactly we're talking about? Are we deciding what we're going to be going with or we, how are we approaching that?
So we'll, we'll have Janay come up here. She doesn't spell her name that way, so don't get fooled by her own misspelling of her name, but her, her name is Janay. We, we brought Janay over from Monterey County. She's an analyst in our jail and she comes with a vast amount of experience because not only was she on the correction side, but after, and I'll let her get into it as she needs to, but after some really troubled times in Monterey County through some judgments and a monitor potentially, which comes in and spends the county's money for you, she shifted over to the ombudsman's side to make sure that there was compliance on the other side. So she, she has a vision of both sides of like what we should be doing as a county and then what happens if we don't. So this is Janay Hopkins.
So thank you. I actually am very excited to be with San Benito County now. I did start with Monterey County. I was there for almost 12 years. To the sheriff's point, I started in more of the correctional side in the towers and I moved over to ombudsperson because they were under implementation. And if you've watched the news, unfortunately Monterey County, I was an ombudsperson for six years. They're still under implementation. What implementation is, is basically a class action lawsuit against the county under five areas for them. They were unfulfilled in their ADA standards. They were unfulfilled in their dental standards. They were unfulfilled in their mental health, their medical, and then their safety and security checks in the facility. I switched over to the ombudsperson when the first one left, based on challenges that she saw. And she got, you know, she took a better position somewhere else. And I was asked to interview for that position because I am pro law enforcement. I have been my whole life, but I'm also pro rights of the individual and I'm very objective. And I think Supervisor Satello saw that I can be pretty harsh when we're going through negotiation processes. As far as your question, Mr. Zenger, the full time standard that they're asking for basically gives us the coverage of not only a full time discharge planner, but it also gives us nighttime care, which statistically we know that nighttime care overnight is when some of our worst incidents occur. That's when we're getting people off the street who can't care for themselves, whether it be safety, sobering, mental health issues. It gives us someone who can be in that area full time when the staff needs to do, custody staff needs to do other things. It gives us full time staffing. And I've only been here since November, but I really felt that the juvenile hall and probation center wasn't getting their share. They were kind of getting the leftovers of the jail. They were getting somebody to go over there part time. But if Wellpath didn't have the staffing, then the jail was uncovered. But they needed their services as well. So those juveniles were not being treated appropriately, in my opinion. I am not a medical professional, but I have been sitting on a medical board for for the last few years. This position, the way Medico staffs, is something that I thought was very creative. They provide a LVN who can do those safety checks to make sure people are taken care of, but can also provide the support to probation that's legally required. To my understanding, chief, the BSCC in the state has already come into juvenile hall and given them a warning on some of those items that they were in noncompliance for. In the last five months, I've been tired of coming to the board and asking for help with mental health and asking for more money. I helped write the proposal for psych services that are needed, but I couldn't understand why Wellpath wasn't providing it. I couldn't understand why that wasn't in their original contract. This contract is all inclusive. This is not us coming and asking for one piecemeal every six months when a new state law comes out. This covers what we need, what we're required now, what we're required under CalAim and what juvenile hall absolutely needs to make sure that they're in compliance. So I'm very comfortable with looking at that. And that's the difference with that full time.
That's the 11, it says the 11.75 versus the 10.25.
It's that nighttime staffing, that second person that gives good coverage of safety and security of the facility, but also supports juvenile hall. But that person also does that discharge planning so they can look for those extra areas of billing to the state. And that's huge. I mean, that one position is huge to me. And it gives us that second person who's working in the facility in case something comes up, a staffing issue, whatever, an emergency comes up. You have somebody who can respond, but you still have somebody doing the job that needs to be done at that time.
Okay.
Thank you. The statement I'm going to make now is not because I'm the CEO of this company. I'm speaking with you as a correctional healthcare physician for 30 years and ex emergency department physician. I'm talking like a doctor now. Our individuals, patients that get incarcerated in our correctional facilities in the country. Are coming in sicker and smarter. They're coming in sicker because of the lifestyle they had. Racial disadvantages, poor socioeconomic status they have. Inadequate care they receive and poly substance abuse. Alcohol, opiate, fentanyl. When they come to jail and under diagnosed or under diagnosed medical conditions, they come to the jail. Jails have become the urgent care centers of correctional industry. Doesn't matter who's the president, who's the majority of the house. As a result of that, we cannot afford to have inadequate, underqualified healthcare personnel in these urgent care centers. So they're coming sicker. Why they're smarter? Thanks to internet. Thanks to personal injury attorneys who used to chase ambulances, not they chase inmate patients. So we have to be very careful to provide adequate services to reduce the liabilities for the sheriff's office, for the county. And for the inmate patients who have somebody outside who loves them. It's very basic. I treat these jails that we have under contract as my personal office, as my office. And these inmate patients as my regular patients. It's very simple. That's exactly why we are the only company that hasn't had any single judgment. When you search the internet and the solution committee has done that. So we like, we will be honored and very passionate for San Benito County. To be our first contract in the great state of California. Me as a licensed physician in this state for thirty years.
Thank you. Understood. Thank you. Thank you. And so just question on the R F P process. The, I guess that this has the cost was, was the R F P the point system based on the recommendation or the, the base staffing levels? Or am I misunderstanding that? How was that scored, I guess?
Barbara, you want to take that one or I think? Or Janay or Tom? I was just trying to go back to this.
No, it wasn't. I could pull up probably if I was given a minute into detail. So those were the broad categories, but each of the specific questions in the R F P actually was given sub-points. And so the, the costs, for example, there was two parts of that. One was under overall cost and then also cost value. And then each of the other questions had several different subcomponents. So some, some sections were like worth two percent or 10%. So I could pull that up if you wanted. But no, it wasn't based upon either. It wasn't based upon specific levels of staffing.
Okay.
It was an overall view of the qualifications because we weren't sure which way the board would go as far as the staffing levels.
Got it. Okay, understood. Thank you.
And our, just to clarify, R F Q, right, versus R F P?
R F P.
Okay. R F P and R F Q were in both combined essentially, right? Okay, sorry.
Supervisor Velazquez? Thank you, Sheriff. I, I have to say I'm pleased in what I'm hearing here, doctor. I'm gonna, I'm gonna warn you. Don't jinx yourself. You have a good record. As you said, people are getting smarter. So I really thank you. I can see your passion and I believe your passion. So that's great.
Thank you, sir.
Sheriff, you talked about, Janay, you talked about the billing for services. And that's really what caught my attention as I'm part of the budget ad hoc. One of the things I'm seeing is the lack of billing for services across the board, not just your agencies. So that's really important because then we could provide the services that are really required and that the public deserves. So I just want to make sure we're really going to be aggressively, based on, I'm gonna go to every department and say the same thing. You know, we have to get after the billing of services. It just doesn't, we don't just provide these things for free.
Yes, sir. So I appreciate that. And I think that some of it speaks a little bit to what Supervisor Zenger was asking. So prior to CalAim, and correct me if I'm wrong, so the, the team of Janay and Renee are the experts in this, in this whole deal. But I'm gonna try to butcher it the best I can. So prior to CalAim, we could not bill for the services. So CalAim was brought in because one, we need to, for morality, we need to provide the level of service for this population. That, that we should be providing. Then there's a legal standard, right? But, but what CalAim is trying to do is make sure that we're able to provide the services. We talk about unfunded mandates all the time, right? So this is kind of a funded mandate. We got a large bucket of money to, to roll this out. And now it gives us the ability to go back and bill for the services that we're providing. There are some nuances there with ninety days of release, which most of our population is. So it's really hard for us to tell exactly what revenue stream is going to come in. And that's why I spoke a little bit to what Supervisor Zenger was talking about. When we talk about having that person 24 hours a day. That's going to be able to stay on top of that billing correctly. We're afraid that we would be missing a revenue stream. This is the best way that I can try to, this is the analogy I can, I had yesterday when we were talking about budget. I believe that if the county, this is, we, I've said this a lot, if the county brought in a grant writer full-time and you paid them six figures, they're going to pay for themselves. And then some. That's my opinion. That's what I've seen before. I believe that having that other body in there, the, the extra F T E is going to pay for themselves. In revenue that they're going to bring in by the aggressive billing back to the state. But that's what I believe. And we're going to have to come back to you a year from now and talk about, or periodically through CalAim. What does that revenue stream look like? Because we haven't started billing yet. And so going forward, we, I believe that we're going to have, well, it's not that I believe. We are going to have a funding stream coming into the county that never existed before. A discharge planner in CalAim is required by law. We have the funding right now to start that system without any impact of the general fund. And then hopefully the revenue stream coming in is going to offset that cost. And we're going to be able to provide this mandate and have revenue to do that. So I don't know if that was a appropriate way to explain it.
It, it is. I, I just want to point out, I was glad to hear it. And again, across the board, I'm seeing the lack of charges. And I, I want to make sure everybody's clear that every department really has to step back and take a look at it. Because as the doctor's saying, really, our, our job is to provide a, a higher level of service so we can prevent the lawsuits and all these things and what the public deserves. But if we miss the other part of the billing, we can't provide those services. And that's in every one of your different departments.
And real quick, I'll let the doctor speak, but that's one of the things our budget officer, our interim budget officer talked about yesterday is what, how are we going to work into the contract language to make sure that those things are happening and we're hitting those benchmarks? And we're making sure that we're getting the best bang for our buck as a county. I do believe, I think that you've all seen so far, the passion that Dr. O brings to this. He's got an amazing story that he hasn't got into because I told him he had limited time to speak. But his, his journey here to this country and what he's been able to do for himself is equally as inspiring. We believe him. And, and it's, it's hard because I don't always feel that way about vendors. But I'll, I'll let him speak too, but I, I do believe that they are going to do the right thing and help bring that revenue stream out of the county.
It's okay. I don't want to have you jinx yourself. More comments, doctor. But I, I really, it's, I'll say this, it's really rare that I find somebody I can absolutely believe at the first moments. And I watch the body language, everything else. I can see your passion. I really can.
Thank you.
But for him to succeed, we have to do our part behind the scenes and make sure that billing is happening. Again, across the board in every single department that I've gone through, the books so far, we have to make sure we're doing that. And be more creative and be more forceful to the state of, you're gonna pay up. We have to to provide these services. So again, thank you for being here, doctor.
Thank you. Thank you so much for having me. Thanks for, Sheriff, for inviting me to be here. Cost of a medical department in any jail. Number one, fifty-five percent of the cost is the staff's salary and benefits. Number two, usually is off-site cost. Either emergency room or outpatient visit to the doctor's offices, right? A specialist. At Medico, we have very comprehensive, detailed, practical, doable, legally savvy. That expect the nurses, L V Ns or R Ns to work within the scope of work. And we will have someone 24/7 on call for them. So when the nurses use those guidelines, unnecessary transportations to the emergency room or doctor's offices will not happen. So that's saving cost right there. Three, the cost is the cost of pharmacy medications. Not just psychotropic medications or HIV medications. And we have developed a formulary, like Kaiser, like H M O. That we encourage all of our providers, physicians, psychiatrists, or mid-level providers, physicians, system, nurse practitioners to adhere to that formulary. By doing that, we will be savvy for the taxpayers' money to be a spend for pharmacy costs or off-site visit cost. But we need to have proactive care by having adequate number of healthcare licensed healthcare personnel to reach out to address these issues of medical and mental health in advance before it's too late. There is not a single week you open a newspaper or go on the internet, you see this jail, that jail had problems. Somebody lost a limb, right? Somebody died. Somebody went through withdrawal. Jail's 24/7. It's an urgent care center that's open 24/7. So he cannot shut his jail medical department. So we have to have adequate personnel to receive individuals who come to the jails. Withdrawal from fentanyl, opiate, benzodiazepine. And sometimes overdoses when they arrive to the jail. So we have to be proactive. We have to have adequate staff to address those issues before it's too late. And I firmly believe in that. That's how I built this company from scratch. And we like to deliver the same. We don't want San Benito County to be our first and last contract in California. I didn't waste thirty years of my time and life and my license to come here and goof it up next week. Or July first. Thank you.
Supervisor Corral?
Well, thank you and I appreciate everybody's work on this R F P. A couple of questions and Commander Corral, I'm really sorry. I think you might be the one that might have to answer this and you just sat down. Sorry about that. So one of the things that after doing a tour of the jail that, that I've learned is that we have a large percentage of inmates that are awaiting sentencing. And that costs us in healthcare and medical care and behavioral healthcare and mental healthcare. What can we do to start to have a conversation with the courts and all of the process of moving people through the system more efficiently? I think this came up in our public defender conversations. And so I just kind of want to make sure that we're, we're keeping that conversation alive. What is the percentage right now of inmates that are unsentenced or awaiting sentence?
Thank you, Supervisor. I don't have the, the numbers today, but
Like rough?
Recently that, so I'll give you numbers from last week.
Okay.
It was, it was around 10 to 12%, which is, I think it was thirteen out of our hundred and sixteen.
Are awaiting a sentence?
Are sentenced.
Are sentenced. So I, I kind of wanted to go to, so it's the reverse of that. We're talking about
So a vast, vast majority are, are unsentenced. And fortunately, the community has really come, all the, all the affected agencies have come together already and are working on this. CEO of the, of the court, Tim Newman, has really spearheaded this, actually brought it to my attention. That made me look with my staff at deep into the numbers in, in our population to, to really realize it. And that the public defender oversight committee has been extremely helpful in that. And to where I say is everybody is kind of working together on this to realize it is an issue and we're going to move forward to, to try to make it better.
And it's not just an issue from the public defender side. It's an issue of cost on the medical side. Because you have inmates in there that are just waiting.
Yes, and it's actually very unfortunate and I can tell you these stories, you know. One, someone came in in very bad shape, mental health issues. And it was pretty nice to see him that we got him on his feet. It was very pleasant because it wasn't. And then several months later, came back and was, we had to start all over again. And this is why all this is so important, continuity of care, effective discharge planning, working with behavioral health to make sure that reduce recidivism and that this story that I brought up, which unfortunately isn't rare, hopefully limits that. And we, well, better for the whole community as a whole.
Well, and I appreciate your focus on this. And I know from the tour that, that it's something that you're aware of. And I just kind of want it to be known more broadly that we, we have still larger issues that are causing costs to increase. The other thing is with contract wording. One, I totally agree with Supervisor Velazquez on medical reimbursement. We're both, we will be going after private and state reimbursement. I just want to make sure that that's very public because reimbursement is, is crucial to be able to keep programs like this going. Because if we don't know where the funding's coming in the future, it's going to just cripple us. We're already crippled. You guys sat through hearing our, our, you know, issues with fire. And if we're not looking at this five, 10 years down the road, we're, we're not planning and we need to be planning. But contract wording and ensuring that there are clear roles and responsibilities and ensuring that if there are exclusions, you guys are discussing the exclusions and who will be covering the exclusions. I like seeing the heads nodding. That makes me feel much better. And then transportation. Transportation is a major issue.
It's, it's a severe issue.
Major.
My transportation unit, which was already dangerously understaffed, is down to one individual.
And how can we ensure if we're, I mean, I, I just want that to be part of the conversation. If, if we need to be looking at transportation alternatives, it's something that I know from the tour and talking with you, it, it's a, it's a real challenge.
Those are in working with my team. We're looking at multiple ways to, to address the issue, which I think is the appropriate way to deal with it. One is an effective medical contractor, which would low, lower our off-site visits. And especially to the emergency room, which is extremely taxing. I mean, sometimes if they're there for a couple of days, you're talking all that overtime rate on a already taxed staff. That's one aspect. We're looking at private security companies to help out with that. That's something I'm not a hundred percent comfortable with, but it's something that I'm, I'm looking into just as, as a way to cut costs. And to look out for my staff as well. So it's a multiple faceted approach. We're looking to, to deal with this issue.
I totally agree in making sure that if we can get reimbursed on transportation for medical purposes, that needs to be looked at. I mean, if, if we're not looking at all of the medical services being provided and trying to get as much reimbursement from the state as possible and from private insurers, I just think it's something that I wanted to highlight. And I thank you for all your time that you spent educating me about your challenges at the jail. So.
And not to belabor this, but just to add a couple of other things. It's probably not super popular with the community, but we also work with the courts when people are medically compromised to have them released. And we don't always get cooperation with that, but we've definitely tried. If we have people that are severely medically compromised sitting in our jail. We, we've really tried to position the court to release those people out of our custody to reduce those costs. The last thing is that we talked a lot about, I mean, I know in our budget meeting, we were talking about unfunded mandates, priorities for our lobbyists. I was asked by the law enforcement committee, the senate and the joint assembly in senate in Sacramento to go up and speak on Prop 36, Prop 47. And one of the things that I partnered with Sheriff Don Barnes out of Orange County, who they are way more impacted than us just because of their size. But we are pushing on the state to get more funding to help with these type of services. Because as the doctor was saying, our correctional facilities in California specifically have become the number one primary medical step-down units in the state. And so when the hospitals can't handle these people and the community can't handle these people, they come into our custody. And we are the de facto medical step-down and behavioral health. We don't have a secure behavioral health facility in this county. And I've tried with our neighboring counties to get, let them to let them contract with us so we could take our people there. So then we become the step-down units for behavioral health as well. So I appreciate your questions and appreciate the team's work, and I'll stop talking.
No, thank you so much. I really do appreciate all the work that you guys have put into this. I'm very supportive of it. But I want to just reassure the public that you're looking at all areas of where we can look at cost savings and where we're going to have challenges. And I thought transportation has been a highlighted one, but also the amount of incarceration that are awaiting sentencing. These are things that will shrink down our costs if we actually are able to collaborate with the courts and with our public defenders. So those are all my comments. I just want to thank you so much for all your work.
Thank you very much. I'm certainly comfortable with Medico. The reimbursement side, because we deal with budgets. Is there any rough idea, any rough range, any percentages, dollars, anything that we can provide as far as an expectation? We're trying. And what I can tell you is that we will definitely try to have something. When we bring a contract back, we'll try to have some better. We're asking everybody, this is so new. The thing that I keep telling people is the people running CalAim don't really understand how CalAim is working yet. And those are the people at the state because it's so new. It happened quickly. Everyone's trying. And they, but at the same time, they've been very flexible with us. For us to be able to tap into the funding to get this started for a discharge plan, you're not really supposed to use the funding for staff, but we're able to use it through a contractor provider to provide the services that CalAim. So they've been very flexible with letting us step this up and get it going without a cost to the general fund. But we're struggling to find a formula or something that's going to tell us what is the revenue stream going to be. And so, but we're asking, and I hope we can bring something back for you.
I think it's not from our end. It just seems like a flaw in the overall program that there isn't some sort of methodology that's being presented as we commit all these dollars to this.
Absolutely, especially when you're talking about a multi-year contract. That's, I expected that was going to be one of the questions of the board was, you know, moving forward after this. And so all I can say is that there's probably a couple of different goals of CalAim. One is to really have that warm handoff, to link people with services when they go back into the community. And when we were on the HARP team and we were doing a lot of the stuff with the homeless, the unhoused population, we talked a lot about, you know, getting them on the right path to not come back into the system. And so that's part of this. The other part is to give counties the ability to bill and recuperate costs from the insurance companies and from Medi-Cal, which we were never able to do before. So I think that it's just so new that there's not, it does seem flawed, but it's not for lack of effort. And I think everyone is trying to get that thing. But I think they're also hesitant to say you can expect X amount of dollars, and then maybe that's not going to come to fruition. So we're kind of looking at it like we just got to get, I mean, it's a law, so we have to do it. And then once it starts rolling in, then we'll have a better idea of how it's going. But I know that's not comforting for
No, I get it. I think when you bring the contract back, if it's to whatever extent you can refine sort of a range or something that gives us, you know, is it most of these dollar amounts that we're talking about? Is it a smaller percentage, a bigger? So that's kind of, you know, it'd be interesting to know, especially going forward, you know, considering the affordability part. More on behavioral health. Is essentially not willing to service the jail. How does this align with the reimbursement end of the agreement? State subvention, whether it's state subvention or Medi-Cal, whatever may, I'm not an expert on Medi-Cal. Do we get reimbursements for the behavioral health services as well?
Yes, yes.
And again, there's just a question mark as to what level.
Yeah, I think normally what would have happened is that we would have, behavioral health would have billed the sheriff's office for their response, and then they would have then gone and billed whatever they could bill back to Medi-Cal, which probably at that time, if they were incarcerated, was zero. So they were probably using subvention funding. And I don't know, I don't want to put Renee on the spot. I know you came from that world. But so now that, and I really try to be careful. I don't want to hurt anyone's. Every time I talk about behavioral health, I seem to crush the hearts of the people that work there. And I have a lot of love and respect for everybody that works there. There's a flaw in the system. And the fact of the matter is there's one psychiatrist in the county that does not want to service the jail. That's not a reflection on the people that work in behavioral health. That's a system problem because of liability. It's a very litigious environment. They don't want to operate in there. That's a, we talk about this at the state level. So the fact of the matter is, it's factually true that behavioral health is not willing to go and service the jail. Can they legally do it? Absolutely. Could you make them do it? I believe you can. They're not doing it. So we have to figure out something else. Now we will be able to bill for that through Medi-Cal.
But are we going to get all that money back? Again, is that just a looming question mark? Because I am concerned about, we have, behavioral health is funded by subvention funds. I think I'm just laying out what we all know, but just in case anyone's watching. Those are outside dollars, state slash federal. Behavioral health is funded. General fund dollars, which we're using for this, are precious dollars that we just got through this conversation with FIRE and all the other important departments that we have in our county that we fund with those discretionary dollars. So I guess I'm just getting at a concern that I have of putting forward general fund dollars that we don't necessarily have to put forward if we have the services available at behavioral health. And how could we potentially work with behavioral health to find a path forward if there aren't the level of reimbursements that would justify?
That would probably be somewhat of a question for Dana and her team. I don't want to step on their toes on this one. But I do know as far as response, like with the crisis response team that they, the model that they put into, response to the jail is not reimbursable for them. So that's one of the reasons why that's kind of off the table because it's an expense that they're not going to be able to recuperate. Where in this instance, maybe there's wisdom in that because now those responses would be, I mean, our work in there with Medico would be reimbursable. So I know that behavioral health also gets reimbursed by Medi-Cal. And my understanding from the behavioral health director is a response to the jail from the, because we have the crisis response is probably one of the biggest things that we have to worry about. We have people that are just in dire need of response immediately on Saturday at two o'clock in the morning. Behavioral health's closed, right? So we need to be able to cover that. If their team that they just went and contracted with Pacific Clinics, this is my understanding, responded, they would not be able to recuperate that cost. But we can through Medico.
So is there a potential that we could recuperate all of the mental health service costs?
My understanding, if it's billable to Medi-Cal, we can recuperate the cost.
Because that would be additionally helpful to know when we bring the contract back. I understand the conundrum that behavioral health has and litigation and dealing with one psychiatrist. It's just, if we had to find some sort of a compromise and it was going to cost the general fund additional dollars, I would feel the obligation to at least pursue that. But go ahead, sorry.
So to the chair, just so you know, each county wrote their CalAim request proposal, and they're all on a different timeline. So we're reaching out. We're in tons of committee meetings with other counties to see who has started and who has started those billable services. No one has been able to give us a number. So every week, Renee, and I'm not sure, I believe the chief, myself, we're in different meetings. I'm in ADA meetings, I'm in mental health meetings, and we're trying to get those numbers for you. Because I think they're more important going forward to know where we stand going into the contract, but then also year after year, right? And knowing where that lies. So there's two things. One, I believe that Medico gave us a contract, an idea of staffing that gives us not only that continuity of care, but to reduce, to your point, the transportation. They enable their providers to make decisions on site that WellPath and CHP didn't seem to have in their abilities. So we took, in fact, I believe a few weeks ago at the meeting, Supervisor Curro, you brought up at the state level, we need that funding, right? Well, we, this gives us a total contract, total ability to look at all those pieces. So if somebody goes and sees an LVN or an RN or an NP, whoever they see, even if it's for mental health or it's for medical, now it's one piece. We're not trying to piecemeal the billing. It's all one item that we can go back and bill. And I believe it's Health and Human Services has done a fantastic job of getting those Medi-Cal sign-ups. So they come in every week to get those Medi-Cal sign-ups leading us into this CalAim. Again, a grant, I believe, that was worked through. So we're at a good place to go forward with how many people are coming in, to know who has Medi-Cal, who has that private insurance. And now we have a contract that covers all of it. So we don't have to worry about going to behavioral health and saying, hey, can you bill this for us or do we bill it? It's one piece. That discharge planner, that one point seven five and that full-time employee, that's the big difference. And that's the person that can look at those grants and can look at CalAim going forward and those billable dollars. So hopefully that helps you feel a little bit more comfortable that that person will be responsible. And maybe in a past life, I also have a little bit of input in that. And so I've been very diligent in making sure that that contract, we move some of those pieces. That, yes, this needs to be a billable service. This isn't going to be out, you know, in a different contractor. I want everything, including that contract. Medico has been very responsive in saying, yes, we agree with you. We will move that into a billable service and under the discharge planner. So we don't have to keep going back and forth with who's going to take care of it. Behavioral health doesn't have, to my understanding, the staffing to take care of the jail, whether it's an ability or not. We have somebody who can do it now, and then we can get that reimbursement. Does that help? And I will try to get you those numbers for the first county that tells us what they received. We're all waiting for that same number.
Hundred percent. Anything further? Otherwise, Supervisor Curro?
I just want to, on the behavioral health side, when it comes to the challenges, they can't build private. It's very clear. So it becomes a pain because they can only support the Medi-Cal people, and they can't, this is all-inclusive, which keeps it under one umbrella, which I completely support. And coming from a background in criminal justice, mental health, I got to tell you, it's an area that, sorry, forty years ago, it needed help, and it still needs help now. But this is a big step forward for San Benito County, so thank you.
Thank you. Entertained a motion?
I move to approve as recommended.
We have a first, we have a second?
I'll second.
Second, roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Cosmiki?
Yes.
Supervisor Zenger? Supervisor Satello?
Yes.
Supervisor Curro?
Yes.
Supervisor Oleskas?
Yes.
Five-zero vote, motion passes.
Thank you.
I'll deal with that. All right, thank you very much, everybody, for that. Well, that would take us to item two point three, accept presentation regarding road project status. And we have Public Works Administrator Steve Loop here.
Did you want me to wait a second?
Okay.
Just a moment, please. All right, good morning, Chair, Board, members of the public, Steve Loop, Public Works Administrator. We're going to be reviewing some current road projects and upcoming road projects this morning, so. All right, so out along Highway one fifty-six, there's half a dozen, actually more, parallel roads. And the county has committed and contributed up to four million dollars to repave those roads that were in dire need. And so at this point, half the roads have been reconstructed in the really, really, I don't know, areas that have really degraded considerably. And then with the remaining funds, we've worked with the contractor determined where we could essentially do potholes and a slurry seal. And so I'll go through those real quick, and then I'll stop back at Seeley Avenue. So those, the roads that have been reconstructed thus far are Prescott Road, San Giusto Road, Freitas, and Bixby. And in addition to that, Duncan Road and Lucy Brown Lane and San Juan Highway near Prescott, those are going to be getting a slurry seal, which is just a thin seal of emulsion and rock and thin layer of asphalt over the areas that weren't as badly degraded. But again, we're spending the whole four million. And then the city of San Juan Batista, they're also contributing to the project. It essentially is accompanying the project where the city of San Juan Batista is building a sewer main all the way from downtown San Juan Batista through these roads to the regional wastewater treatment plant. And so we teamed with them so that we could save some funds to have the roads repaved while they're out there and they're contributing to the project as well. So tentatively next week, those roads will going to have the final slurry seal on top of them. And then seven days or longer after that is when we can stripe them. So that's the tentative schedule. So we've been working with our contractor out there to confirm that that's going to happen. But that is a tentative schedule. And then on Seeley Avenue, number three, we actually have completed ninety-eight percent of that project. We do have a little bit of funding available. And so there's a curb we're going to be removing and a couple of curbs, asphalt dikes, that we're going to be installing. And then that project will be finished, finished at Seeley Avenue. That's over in Aromas, for those folks that aren't familiar. Then we'll jump over to Union Road near the bridge project. So for those folks that have been driving near our new bridge, we're actually going to be making a slightly better alignment per plan, always per plan, on the east side of Union Road. So right now, as you're approaching from Highway twenty-five on Union, there's a bit of a little reverse S curve there. That's going to go away. It's actually going to be a smoother curve transition. And that's going to be completed by that project. Caltrans didn't, they only go so far past a bridge. And so with road work, and so we have about one hundred and fifty feet that we budgeted, we met the contractor, that we're going to be having that last one hundred and fifty-foot section completed pretty much at the same time as the other, the main project is paved, which will be in June. And then that project will be finished, finished. For the road projects, we'll be still in the creek, installing some planting and fun things for the critters. But the road project will be finished in June, so. Shore Road. So my, our advice this week especially is to avoid Shore Road. The project is on schedule, on budget. However, we're paving this week. And in the mornings for commute hours and in the afternoons, on the opposite direction for folks coming back into town. Even when our crews pause essentially every seven minutes to switch traffic, there's only so much traffic that can get through in seven minutes. And so there's backups that are occurring. So there was some extensive backups yesterday. They will also, there will also be some extensive backups tomorrow and especially Thursday. So anybody listening, please try to avoid that. I'll work with Rosemary, our PAO, after this and put out another kind of bulletin on Shore Road. But we don't want to detour and completely close the lanes because then that forces people onto one fifty-two and some other things. But in an only, it's really during commute hours, basically. Um, during the afternoon, I was there, you know, even at eleven o'clock or ten o'clock yesterday was fine, but in the commute hours, there's really no way around it because there's too much traffic going into that spot. And so matter, you know, if we want to build the project and complete it, we just can only have certain windows of a certain amount of traffic that's released through the intersection. So next week should be a lot better. And then we'll, we should be, uh, doing driveways next week. And then striping will be about a week or two after that, so. That's Shore Road. Coal Road. So, um, we're going through the final, final plan designs with the designers, and we do anticipate having that start construction this summer. And Union Road additionally, so, um, we're working with, uh, a project management team, which the roads ad hoc, we have met once with this, a project management team in a very good way. We're going to be working with that team, actually meet with our roads person today at one o'clock. And we're going to try to find a way to accelerate Union Road to make sure that we actually start the construction this summer. Um, and we have a, a good strategy to do that. So that's basically the last piece of Union Road, all the way from essentially the one fifty-six conform, San Juan Oaks signal, all the way down to, for about three miles, so that that whole, um, segment will be reconstructed and starting this summer. And so I'm going to pause there for just a minute. Um, we, the roads ad hoc and the, the budget ad hoc are tentatively going to be meeting next week together, or at least one right after the other, but ideally together. And so during that meeting, we're going to be discussing our current budget and how much funding we have available specifically from the general fund and, and see how that might impact, uh, or not impact road budgets. But as we all been discussing this morning, budgets are pretty tight this year, so we just have to discuss that. And, and I want to mention to folks up here that anything that the road hawk decides internally, we will bring that to the full board for further discussion. So we don't intend to make any unilateral changes like all ad hocks. We bring it to the board for further discussions. And so we're getting there, last, during the last meeting, we, we talked about some road priorities and, and good things. And so, um, so, yeah. And then the painting, uh, the stripes, centerline stripes, those are still on schedule to get the bids in this month and start striping next month. Assuming there's striping, painting, striping contractors available, but that's still on schedule. That's another project that we're working on internally. And I will pause there for questions, so.
Go to public comment first, please?
If you'd like to make a comment on Zoom, please press star nine or the raised hand icon. And I have no public comment.
Great, well, supervisor Curro, did you want to start?
Sure, thanks, Steve. Um, so my question's from the consent item. In looking at that Excel that was attached and looking at the April sixteenth, twenty twenty-one five-year road project, I'm seeing discrepancies, things that in the five-year road project should have been done fiscal years in the past. And I'm concerned that we're going to put everything in the last year of the five-year project, and we're not really going to be able to get it all done. I'm looking for realistic, not another, we're pushing it to the spring, we're pushing it to the fall, and then it just goes another year. Um, I would really like, uh, if the ad hoc has already gone through it, if they could bring it back with, um, an update to the board is that five-year road, bridge, and cost funding, it ends on June thirtieth of twenty-six, so the end of this fiscal year. And I'm looking at that list, and I'm just not seeing comparables of work completed. Maybe that's something on the side that we can talk about. My biggest thing is just being able to tell constituents the reality because right now I can't give them an answer on road projects. And that's about all I have to say. You and I have already talked, so thank you.
Supervisor Velasquez?
Thank you. Uh, yeah, we will be bringing more information to it. I think the issue we're having right now is budget. As was mentioned earlier, we need to know, is money really available to do some of these projects? And so we'll be working on that. I think we're making progress, working with some of the, uh, outside engineers to try to expedite some of these projects and better ways to do it so we can get more done, uh, on a project rather than the start and stop approach. It's just, if we're going to do a road, let's finish that entire road so we don't have to revisit. Uh, the striping you brought up, and I, I know we did talk about this earlier when we talked about going ahead and approving the striping. But as Union Road gets closer to a start time, and if some of these striping companies are booked, there's a point where it's not going to make sense. So are we figuring that in? And are what, how, what's the answer to that? If, if, if construction is going to start on Union Road, let's say June, and striping is going to start on, on Union Road in June, then we're not making any sense anymore. So what's the ability to pull back on, on some of this? And what's, or do we have the exact timelines? Because striping is critically important, obviously. Some of those roads, you don't know where you're at. It's very true. We want to make sure the public's safe. Um, but if there's a two, three week or a month gap there, we have to look at that.
Yeah, so I'm not sure when I'm supposed to respond, but absolutely. So the striping will, well, let's get the prices. We'll see when the contractor can stripe. But if it's going to be within a couple of months of the actual project, obviously it doesn't make sense to proceed. So we'll have to make that judgment. We can even talk about it during the roads ad hoc, but I agree hundred percent. There might be some roads that it doesn't make sense to stripe now if we're going to be rebuilding them in a couple of months, so.
Anything further?
Yeah, yeah.
Go ahead, supervisor Zenger?
Okay, thank you. Yeah, um, thanks, Steve. Just on that striping note, you know, I, I almost, I almost at this point just think I made the wrong call. I regret the striping thing at this point, just thinking about it more and more. I mean, but it is what it is, and hopefully, yeah, if it gets too close, we can pull back. Um, all right. Uh, so great to see Shore Road, a lot of people, that's, that's, um, that's huge for, for North County. Um, I will say, and this is inevitable, um, you know, a lot of people ask for the road to be fixed. And then, of course, there is complaints that the road is being fixed. Could you explain, I guess, generally for everyone, why the road is not being done overnight, I guess?
Sure, so overnight costs, they'll add about thirty percent to your cruise, um, the budget overnight. And so paving, basically, the majority of costs are the road work essentially. So we just didn't have that extra thirty percent. We talked about it internally early on, but if we got much lower bids, maybe we could have switched to overnight work. Um, and I understand there is some pain, and there was some pretty long delays yesterday, um, unfortunately. But again, the paving work specifically really lasts about a week. The, the work that's, causes the delays before that, and I got there myself, the delays were seven minutes, twelve minutes, somewhere in that range, which isn't great, but, um, it's just part of the
Yeah.
short-term pain, I guess you'd say.
Understood completely. Um, I think people just need to be patient when we go through this because we don't want it costing thirty percent more, of course. So that's, that's generally why these things aren't done in the middle of the night, because we can't afford to. Is there any, any further update on the Fallon signal? I know last we were dealing with, uh, P G and E, and I, I saw the, you had sent out to us at least the, the, uh, plans, the rough plans, I guess. Is there anything you can say about that as far as timelines?
Yeah, so, um, we said ably, we're not, it's a different intersection, but it'll answer your question in a moment. We're meeting on the Comstock intersection because those plans were a little bit ahead of Fallon. Fallon, we, the, the, the critical timeline will be P G and E and utility relocation. So we're working with the designers to try to minimize how we're impacting all those poles at that intersection. So the good news with Fallon is we have the construction budget. It's a T, it's a TIF project, a traffic impact fee project. So I don't have a timeline when P G and E is going to be finishing their design, but we're ahead of them. The way it works, P G and E, in a good way, I mean, they, this is not a, a ding against P G and E, but they wait till your plans are almost finished, and then they start their design because our plans change a little bit. And so we're getting to a point where our plans are finishing, so we're just starting to reach out to them. And, um, as soon as I have a timeline from P G and E, I'll, I'll let you know, so.
Okay, okay, thank you. And the, the last thing, now that we're sort of out of the rain, um, just regarding the potholes this year, did, was it, did we use a different mix this year? Do we try something different, or was it the same? I just, they seem like I got, maybe it was less rain, I got less calls this year, I would say, as opposed to previous years?
So, yeah, um, what we've done, and we, we had to pause a bit, but on the, the slightly warmer minds, we previously, to answer your question, we installed a warm mix that was from a different plant that lasts a lot longer, in a good way. It's actually slightly less expensive, and they are also, they're going to start making that mix again in May. So the good news is, like you're saying, that they seem to hold better. And just for folks that are listening, you know, we would love to repave every road out there. Unfortunately, all we can do with the sum of the money that the state gives us is, is just fill potholes. So to answer your question, we did find a better mix this past year, and it seems to be working a little bit better, so.
Okay, you say that was cheaper than the
The coal patch, yeah. It's actually slightly cheaper, and it works better, so it's kind of a win-win.
Seems like a no-brainer. All right, thank you.
Sitello?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Just one quick question. Um, I, I know several of us have been contacted regarding the, um, San Juan Hollister Road and some of the damage that was done to that with the construction of, um, the Highway one fifty-six. Is there anything, I mean, I get we've got real budget constraints, but is there anything that we can work with Caltrans on so that they take some of the accountability for that, or are we completely on the hook for that? And I apologize if you guys are working on this and COG. I just thought I would ask, um, just because people have reached out to me.
And you're referring to the friendage road, essentially?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So, yeah, and I believe another, because resident reached out in, in that regard. And I'm ninety-five percent sure I forwarded the, the request to Caltrans. But I drove the road. There are some, you know, reasonable-sized or unreasonable-sized, um, potholes. So right now, that is still under the ownership of Caltrans till the one fifty-six project is completed. We haven't accepted it yet, so technically it is Caltrans. So I'll reach it out to them again. I have two contacts.
Hey, Steve, I want to make sure that we're, I'm, that we're talking about the same road, so not the old one fifty-six. You're talking about the one that was used kind of as our detour. Okay, I just want to make sure that, um, we were talking, okay, perfect. Even if it's just we could fill some of those potholes or something, I just, um, I get the road wasn't in perfect condition before, but now it sounds like it's really, really bad. So if there's anything that Caltrans can do to help, or if there's, um, any extra, um, pothole filler, we can get some of that warm mix out there, that would be great. Not in my district, but I just, like I said, somebody had reached out, and I thought I would just mention it. So thank you.
You bet. And we can obviously still, you know, install our mix as well, even though we haven't accepted the project from Caltrans for puddles. So we can get out there and do that. And I'll forward the request to Caltrans again.
Ideally, Caltrans take care of it.
Correct, that's correct.
Yeah, thank you. That's all I have. Thank you so much.
Thank you, yeah. And so the roads ad hoc and budget ad hoc is both supervisor Velasquez and myself, so we will naturally be meeting together. Um, the point of that conversation was because they're all, I mean, I think it's all relevant. We want to have a really good idea of what we can do now. I, I don't expect any projects are going to be eliminated. It's just what can we prioritize now in the next year? What do we have funding for now in this next fiscal year? Um, project management, just want to clarify, we are, like you mentioned, I think sort of in the middle of your presentation, where we have a project manager, they were already on contract, um, that we're using. And then there's an expectation to potentially go out for R F P, uh, into the future, into next fiscal year. So we want to make sure that that's appropriately budgeted for, um, as we go through the budget process. Is, and a question, is Shore Road possibly causing the backups on twenty-five and one fifty-six because of the ancillary effect? I'm trying to figure out for the last month, three weeks, four weeks, what is going on? I brought it up at COG as well. One fifty-six is in my district, and it, it was like it was, we had a huge problem. The problems seemed to mostly go away, and now we have a huge problem again. And no one seems to know exactly what happened, other than potentially the egg season shift. That couldn't be necessarily, I wouldn't think, the cause of what's become really kind of a nightmare again on one fifty-six.
So I did just forward a, I guess you'd say, an email request over to Caltrans about, I don't know, a couple of hours ago, because there was a big backup the other day. Um, the backup was opposite of Shore Road. However, I'm sure folks, um, that are trying to avoid the detours at Shore, there's probably some
That's what I'm referring to, yeah.
Yeah, there's probably some orders that have
I'm just
somehow routed over there.
Don't know for sure, though. I just don't know if you had it better, so I can answer this, these questions to people that get frustrated about the backups going both ways, morning and in the evening?
Yeah, the one fifty-six, I'd encourage you, I know we both have some contacts at Caltrans to reach out to those folks.
And I have, I have, definitely, yeah.
Ditto.
Okay.
So, yeah, and again, Shore Road, the, the, the big delays will be finished this week, and then we'll just have some smaller delays over the next two, two and a half weeks, for Shore Road.
Okay, okay, yeah, that's it. And other than that, um, we're, we're just, you know, hoping to kind of refine. We've talked about the priorities and trying to, you know, really hammer away at the big, the big, high-volume roads as soon as we can, while not, hopefully not pushing off the other ones. And I agree with supervisor Velasquez about trying to get away from this going segment-by-segment approach, even though financially it might have lined up. If we can find money elsewhere, I, I would suggest that we, we, we look at doing that as opposed to pushing off, for instance, how, you know, part of Fraser Lake into the future. I'd rather just get that banged out all at once. Thanks.
Anything further? Another discussion, hearing none. That was a presentation, so thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Uh, we did go to public comment, I believe. Um, so that would wrap up two point three, and that would take us to closed session. Do we have an estimate, um, on closed session time? Pretty quick? Okay, and do you, is there anything to announce going in, other than public, public comment?
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker per. On Zoom, please press star nine or the raised hand icon. And I have no public comment.
All right, we're adjourned to closed session. Thank you.